So Ms. Harrison, if you will see that just on that screen there, just I got it. Thank you so much. You're all set. Have a good meeting.
Yes, good again.
Sorry.
There we go. Alright, good evening, everyone. It is on this day, the Citrus Select Board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the gentleman's second? So by Mrs. Connelly, second by Mrs. Campfield, your for I begin at like to read our diversity and inclusion statement, the Citrus Select Board is permitted to provide an environment of respect during meetings. We all ask members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community among all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all participants to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. To thank you. Are there any comments this evening? Yep. Okay. So we will look over at the report and our town administrator, Jim.
Good evening. Happy August. I believe it's August 30. We'll start with our water update. The reservoir was on plus two. Back factory pond was plus one and a half. Just again for comparison, last year, the same day last year, reservoir was minus thirty-nine inches and back factory pond was at minus nine. So a lot of rain this year, sure. That's as of Monday, I'm sure the reservoir is. Rainfall was one point three inches and average scale of demand was one point seven four two million gallons a day, which is about the highest expense since we began July. They got a little bit. We do ask people to continue to conserve as best they can. We do have another month to get through. And if we have a lot left over, we'll go pretty aggressive flushing program on the fall. So please continue to save water as we go forward. Residents will be getting the new water bill surely. Please advise the base rate used to drink will increase by two percent fiscal twenty twenty-four. The differential between tier two and tier three was increased sixty point six to one hundred percent. The difference between tier three and tier four is increased forty percent to one hundred percent. That means basically households that have a consumption over three thousand cubic feet will see a material increase in their bill. So more more sense of people saving water. To offset that, we have the five rebate program. Residents can get two hundred and fifty dollars for installing a new excuse me, energy efficient, water efficient washer, dishwasher, washing machine and a hundred and fifty dollars for installing a smart set toilet. You can go to town website and a lot of the public page forms available as well as the list of participating appliances. We're gonna do that till the money runs out. We have twenty-five thousand dollars in water cost budget. So do it early and come on in and get two hundred and fifty dollars back for a dishwasher. I'm gonna skip the lighthouse update tonight because we're gonna have that now. Talking about August, hard to believe, but our light gods are now winding down for the summer. The light gods will be no longer at town beaches on the following day. Egypt Beach last day is August eleventh. Amorak last day is August eighteenth. Minnet last day is August twenty-fifth. Penny Beach last day for light guys is September fourth. The beach is still open, but they will no longer have gods at those point. So please use caution. Dick also asked me to introduce, announce the recreation fall brochure. Down on the town recreation page, recreation station is open August thirty-first at nine AM. Some of those fell off fast, so please be ready. DPW came in, cruised beyond most likely Thursday. It'll be countryway first parish down to the intersection of as you write. They'll also be doing island crossing. That was actually, countryway is actually scheduled for today. The intersection is scheduled today. We put that off today for obvious reasons. That work done later on this week. The gas company is still on Jericho Road. National Grid is in town doing tree work, planting primary lines there on Old Popple Park last week. They'll be all over town for the next two to three weeks. Plus the retreat project. So just keep you aware, there's a lot of different projects going on. We have to keep that on some time. Please use caution. Be aware of the driver around. We'll get everybody through these as quickly as possible. Finally, we have, oh, sorry, one more thing for DPW. We did install two speed control devices that are called speed tables at high school, which was the high school building and passports of the Stephen McRae School Department. I asked for those. There are a lot of people speeding back there. There's a lot of back and forth. Fields and schools, those have been installed. So I'm gonna take it slow back there because we hit those non-speed with speed tables.
What do we call them?
Speed tables. They're much wider than.
But I do not.
Please be cautious. Care back there and go slowly back. This splits our back house. Finally, again, food pantry, most needed items, olives, pickles, relish, microwave popcorn, live bottle juice, canned clams, canned crab meat, salsa, cold healthy cereal, Jell-O and that's why I have.
Right. Any update on the gas company, their time down at Jericho Road?
Yeah, they're going slow. They also contacted me about it and asked if they really had to date the inside roads. And I did say yes, I would be agreement. And they said, okay, just wanted to confirm that. So they're doing services now. I mean, like it's done and that's all handled. It's gonna be good.
No, not a question, but a comment to follow on the food day that you mentioned. Apparently, the president of the Grady Cross Food Food Bank at some ceremony day had complimented its town of Situate and its food bank for how well it won during the pandemic. And that the situation has been particularly good in terms of the food day. So I just thought people would like to know that.
They do a great job and the yield is just getting higher.
And it's, and it's, it's well recognized. So is there anything for Jim?
Um, no.
Be good. Alright. Thank you, Jim. Alright, we'll move on. If somebody else has any questions. So first, we have a couple of donations to go through this evening. The first one, my sister here for the verification one.
I don't know if she has been to make it.
Yeah, so we can still look at that a while. So Untold Ruin is donating two hundred dollars from their shipshape day combined effort and they were donated three hundred dollars by food communication commission. So we thank Untold Ruin and Free Corner in town and really very generous. So can I have a motion? Move this, this left board assessment, total donation from Untold. We're working for the use of under verification permission. Second, move by Mrs. Campfield, second by Mrs. Connelly, all in favor? Great. Thank you so much. Very nice. The next one, is Jessie here? Yep, Jess. We have a nice donation from the Library Foundation. Sounds like a great project.
There's also additional information that we just received yesterday. That is the only with the details that we didn't have.
Gotcha. Thank you. Jessie?
Hi, I'm Joe McDonald, President of the Library Foundation. Actually, three things. First is the donation we're making to the library for the children's room. We did send out details. You have that. It's a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars that we're gonna be providing, Jessie, for build out of playground for the children's room. She is working on this with a subcommittee in the Library Foundation for over nine months now. And has visited different libraries and checked out some of the materials that suit both the library, their sensory, their wealth quality, and probably gonna be a stage one of maybe what they pay project that we can do as examples of what I did.
Much smaller example than the one that we're getting in ours is gonna have the lighthouse and all of the panels. They're interchangeable. So that's nice for us. We can add different panels along the line. But the ones that we've selected for the initial installs are all ocean or sea people there.
And we'll have a seagull instead of a pelican. A seagull instead of a pelican.
Yes, since the panels aren't very popular right now. And if we even walk today, they're stealing food from the way out of their hands. And thank you. It's very generous. That's a great project. That's the timing. So it'll take about three months to custom build. So it does take a few months, but it'll arrive right in time for cold weather here. So it'll be very timely. Inside and use it. And it's really meant to facilitate sensory play, that fine motor skill development. So we're really excited to hear.
Questions?
No question. I just, I did want to note, I found out mistaken. This was a element seven, eight years ago, we built the library that Jessie really advocated for and had to be value engineered from the original budget. So it's thrilling to see that it's finally coming in to the foundation of money for her.
Anyone else?
Well, value engineer is a nice term.
Any questions? Looks great. Thank you very much for the generosity. We appreciate it.
We're also transfer donating just under eleven thousand dollars that we have had in the foundation for about three years now from the City Education Alliance that they provided to us, knowing that it was really earmarked for Jessie. She's been working that down and now we're going to transfer that.
So it went from SCF to the library of the library to.
So basically, what happened is we told the foundation, rather than us submitting costs and invoices to them, we would expend approximately that amount from our gift fund. We also talked to our trustees, our trustees here at Carlton. It's also here about this process. So we did a lot of different products. We refreshed a lot of different collections. Children's, this had to be expended in children's or teens' materials. So we've been working on that for the past three years. We finally got a proposal where we said we've expended everything. In fact, that was a lot to us. So they're really just making that gift account for what was just taken out of it.
So I imagine we have to do two separate motions, right? This one's in the nature, we want to clarify. I think there's a question. That's just, that, that what I want to give them? Yes. So we're gonna get a motion for that? Uh, do you know it? This, it shifts. Okay. Great. Okay. Well, thank you for that. And thank you for taking care of those funds.
Great. And then lastly, I know people wrote up on the weekend, did a breakout, talking about the donation received from Gloria and Nick. Raised over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a great story behind that. I think they're talking about it. It can be read, but I also want to acknowledge the efforts of Tom and Joan Farrar. They helped along with JD Heers, past president of the foundation, championed this for four years. They've been working on trying to get this. And we finally got it done. We finally got the check received. So great job by everyone involved and it was great donation.
Do you want to just take a moment and just talk a little bit about it? I think, you know, we, we owe that family a little time.
We do. We do. She was a go-callist for years. She tackled some of the difficult jobs that the globe had out there. She was definitely a try setter. She would go to various parts of the world to report to the globe, South Africa being one of them. She was there during a part dive. She lived here in Situate and became very close friends with Farrar's and used the library concept. She really had no direct family. So she was able to provide this to us through the work, through the help of they became the executors and Tom, the great library user, chose us as one of the favorites.
I think we'll be doing a separate donation as well on upcoming agenda.
Um, we do.
I know these funds will actually stay with the foundation. So it's a gift directly to the foundation.
Oh, a gift directly.
Right.
They'll lose it. It's a fun process.
Yep.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll be doing a memorial for Gloria. We'll get that taken care of. The rest is certainly gonna be working. Wait, we're, we work right with Jessie on the needs she has and that may be taken.
Awesome. Thank you. That's excellent. Congratulations. Any additional commentary or questions? So I think you just need a motion to accept this very generous donation of the foundation. Move this, move to this left board, accept a donation, twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Library Foundation to purchase the library center, the library children's room, the library. Move by Mrs. Campfield, second by Ted Harrison, all in favor? Bye. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Can we see it? We'll have a little party, we'll have a party. We'll be there. Okay. Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote to accept seventeen thousand four hundred dollars by way of revolving fund. So I think if I'm going to ask Mary P. Kurtz to come on, if you want to come on up, and I think just your name and address. So I'll watch you get there. I'm just gonna show you a bit of the summary.
Mary P. Kurtz, seventeen, Old Mount Road, Amorak.
Welcome. So many, many years ago, there was a betterment to the neighborhood association.
Yes.
Assessed to take care of road. We worked through that. We made a donation three years, three years ago to continue some of that work. And you're here again to make another donation.
Right.
So we have a little bit of a question because it's our understanding that your homeowners association actually hires, contracts and manages every day. So I've been advised that we don't really need to take the donation. So is there a reason why you want to go through the town?
I did. Well, because our betterment was supposed to be a five-year. It was done back in twenty thirteen.
Yep.
But it got put on the books here as a twenty-year. So it's still open. So there are residents that have not paid the six hundred and twenty-five dollars from ten years ago. They're just paying like a very small amount each quarter. So it's not doing us much good. So as long as that money is still being taken in through the taxes, I'm just trying to keep enough money in there going until the betterment's over.
Till it's over.
I want to do a new betterment, but I don't know if I can if there's an existing one.
Do anyone like us a little bit?
I don't know if you could put a second betterment on while there's still a betterment out there. Because a betterment is to better the world, usually to break up its standards to make it whole. In this case, Al is something different. So if, if, to keep the purpose of the betterment, so you can continue to do it over and over again.
Right. So just if there's still outstanding even, doesn't really just twenty-six hundred dollars? So I think the issue is we're, we're trying to figure out if we really need to do this because you end up by going through the town, probably paying higher wages for your services than if you just manage everything forever.
I think we're just using the town to facilitate the payment.
Right. And that's the whole, that's the whole issue is to say that we need to have it, right?
I mean, I could open up an account into it, but my concern is I'm not getting the money that's still being collected from the original betterment into that account. That's why I keep putting money into the existing one.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. The revolving fund still be available to them? Okay.
And just, this was, this is all, every now and then something new comes in front of.
Right.
Yeah.
So my question on this one is, are there any other deposits being made into that? So it's really just for them or does the revolving fund exist?
Normally, normally a road betterment, they will want their road taken in a public way.
Right.
But it's not up to standard. So the town brings it up to standard and then assesses a betterment to pay for that and then retake it as a public way. That's the normal cost of betterment globally.
Okay. So if I'm understanding, so the original betterment was for funds expended that really only going to bring in us. So you are.
They've just gotta keep it so that we can get more safety done, fill it.
Just maintain it. It's a dirt growing in Amorak. I'm just taking care of it up to a certain point. And then when that changed a little over ten years ago, we had to make a decision what we would do. Right. So that's what we worked with Al on it and that's what we came up with. I wasn't part of it at the time I was a resident, but I wasn't there when the tree work and everything got done. So I think it just was something that got missed. It should have just been a five-year betterment and then this wouldn't be happening. I would just open up my own account and you never have to come here. But because it's still maybe there's still folks that are being billed because that little bit of an amount because they have, they still have another ten years to go.
Is there another way to do that to say, you know, to keep it open and collect, you know, let's do, and then disperse it to the you know, for any reason that's going to stick from for a little while?
Yeah, it, it's a betterment. So it has to go into that revolving fund, but it doesn't. In ten years, it'll be over three thousand. That'll do you for a year or two, we'll pay it.
Right. Now that I mean the additional fund there.
The question is whether or not you want to continue to do that because we're not the ones contracting the work. Mary K. already finally sends me the bills and then we pay it. So we're basically the bank for homeowners association.
Yeah.
And that's fine if you want us to continue to do that with ever been chores. And I guess my sense for Mary K. was they want to do another betterment.
It's so, it's hard going around toward a door collecting money from twenty-six homes, you know, and.
But you can't do, like you just said, you can't do a better than that.
That's what I'm wondering. Can we?
Will you all get a visit in better for the same reason?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Modify the terms of an existing betterment.
That would be great if that's, is that possible?
Yeah.
To reduce the ten years down to, I mean, it's such a small amount, but.
And I think Mary K., before you took out the first set of donations, you tried to convince everyone to pay off the betterment. I think there's like seventy, eighty people who just, like right, gonna pay it off. If any of those properties sell, like, like we get paid off in the sale, but.
Yeah.
That would come from the sale.
The town collects the betterment.
Yes. Yes. And then it goes.
And it forces the collection of the betterment?
It's on the tax. Yeah. And if they don't pay it, it, it'll become a tax. I mean.
Yes.
Okay.
I assume you need to be the only person who can keep, oh, but but it's still.
Well, it's not gonna go anywhere. It has to continue. That's why it needs, needs portion.
Can you answer that? Does a betterment can be any amount of years when it's first done? Or is there was a standard number of years that a betterment should be put on the books?
Depends upon the size of the project.
Excuse me? You can elect up to twenty, up to twenty.
Right. That's what happened. Something happened.
Right.
That wasn't right ten years ago. So it shouldn't have been for twenty years for such a small amount.
Right.
But here we are.
It just seems like a lot of work for, for something that you can continue to penetrate the road. Homeowners Association. And then when that money comes into the betterment, twenty-six hundred, you still got that in there. So you tap into the future. My, it's pressing that button together.
Right. But I have an association account now. I mean, we don't have a checking account or anything like that.
Right.
We could open one up, but as long as we have the betterment, we've been using that because the funds.
No, I understand exactly what you're doing. What we're saying is you're probably paying more money because when you pay through the town, you have to pay for daily wages.
No, the town's not doing the work.
Private property. It's in their contract.
I understand. So what I'm, but what I'm saying, saying is, is we're paying, don't we, don't, doesn't that have to be subject to state procurement laws or anything? No?
It's private property. We're basically a.
Okay. Well, I, it's.
What is a law?
It is, you work your day, you love your day.
Next, a new one. So I don't understand. How, how's the betterment assessed based on the value of the property? I mean. Or you just assess. There was a seven month, a seven month. So they spend that.
Ten years ago, you go around and collect it every year?
I know. Well, I've been averaging every three years.
Well, there's, there's two, there's the betterment which we collected. We assessed against apartments, I guess, ten years ago. Some people paid it off. Some people it still comes in on the taxes and before. That money's been spent except for a little amount that we get when people pay their taxes. She then, since then, has gone out and collected money from people.
Donations.
Donation, donations.
Not better.
That she gives to us that goes into the account that then we pay bills on.
So let me ask this. What are the donations like for you? Are they like twenty different checks that you've now deposited in?
Nancy, twenty-nine checks.
Okay.
Twenty-nine checks for six hundred dollars each.
Six.
The original betterment was six hundred and twenty-five dollars per homeowner.
And they're making.
For a total of five-year of betterment. So they got, right. So that's six, there are people still paying at six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the term of twenty years. That's my issue.
Well, I guess what I would recommend is they've already made, have they already made these checks out to the town of Situate?
All done.
Yeah. I mean, maybe what we do is we look for a different solution moving forward, but I feel that the neighbors already done this. They already cut all these checks out of the town of Situate. You've got one here. Is it the best process? No, I don't think so. But I think we've got a fix in advance of collecting the next. That's my personal opinion.
The next six of donation. I don't have to, I would much rather do it through a betterment or whatever you want to follow. So I don't.
Well, we can't do that. So.
I know. I'd have to start a new one, but I can't do a new one.
Correct.
So I'm kind of my hands are a little tired. Yeah.
The only thing moving forward is, is probably just talk about, you probably do need to look at the homeowners association account just like all the other homeowners associations.
That's.
Really? Okay. So I guess, and it's a donation, right?
Yes.
It's right. Any further discussion? Or is less than clear issue? Dirt road, so it's all money, right?
Yeah.
So thank you for.
Thank you.
All the work that you did to and neighbors. Motion?
You want to pass the town laws to take the road back into you?
I do that.
Move that this left board accept the seventeen thousand four hundred dollar donation to the maintenance of Old Mount Road and to deposit such funds in private way we all.
Second, move by Mrs. Connelly, second by Mrs. Campfield, all in favor? Well, thank you for the, your pages and yeah. Explaining everybody. Maybe we can figure out something there for the next one.
Five years. Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Every night. You might be in time for your.
I might be. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, this Pam Martel here. How are you? Come up on this discussion vote for changes taken post for the Cudmore House. So just your name is Navis.
I'm Jeff Martel.
Hi, Jeff.
Navis?
We're living in R D, right?
Not in Pollock.
Yeah.
It took him a ton of season.
Right, exactly. So we have some lovely photos and pictures of people. Do you want to talk a little bit through that?
So Pam's a trustee and design director and exhibit director for the society. And I've got a long background and contract. So I get involved with contracting in the world. We went to the CPC last fall. It was a great town meeting to do these renovations to, to Cudmore House, including walkways because we felt it needed to be obvious to the community how to get into the historic properties and to tie them together in a meaningful way. So really, we're just here kind of as a heads up, approved, but without any specific drives. And we just wanted everyone to know what we were about before you saw a crew out there digging up the lawn. As the phone started ringing. So.
You're getting to see the roof lines here. I don't know if there's a way to enable.
No.
Pictures.
That's great. It's just a way, yeah, we have, we have thought this as well.
Okay.
So we started working out a plan. We met with Jeff Dubin. Yeah, he's been down there on the site with us. We've gone over all the feasibility of doing it because we felt it rather than just doing plain old walkways, there was an opportunity to make it accessible to people in wheelchairs. The house itself, some of the interior doorways are too narrow, but the main back door into it is wide enough. And then there's a building, there's a the rear elevation there. That's third one down. Yeah, right.
Slide.
Anyway, there's a rear door. It's a shed. It's gonna have to be widened a little bit. And talking, we thought originally we might have to concrete in for planning. Jeff Dubin looked at it. I really think you should put a good deck there. It'll be better suited to the building and it'll make sure that the water drains properly around. So.
The sentence. So do you have, my question is, do you have any true like design drawings other than that already? Or is that, you're just here to get to that next stage? Does anybody, I know you said you're an engineer, but is. Does anybody, I know you said you're an engineer, but is anybody actually on it, so I'll make sure it's up to code.
Well, that's what, that's what we had, Jeff Dubin out there. And who'll be working in and the end of it, as we're doing it, no, there's not going to be any, that's good luck, it's not. Basically, we're going to make sure it's five percent rate. You know, he gave us an email, made sure as he walks around that people know the requirements. That's how we're going to do it.
We've done this man house before too, like laying out other, other ways to enter and property, and, um, that help wider, um, so people can then walk across the grass. Yeah. And we've done this at the Maritime Museum too.
Questions, Susan, any? Eric?
Uh, I still, because it's a historical society, but this is all kosher.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because once you start fooling around with the historic structure, oh, you have to be really careful, but it sounds like we obviously know that, but. And Jeff Dubin with condition disabilities, my. The first house has never been accessible to people, um, that are mobility impaired, right, and so when we were doing this work, we're turning it into a, a decorate art museum for the town, and taking, what we'll do is showcase a lot of the articles, the art, the furniture, textile samples, things that people don't normally get to see because it's in our eyes. We're wanting to, um, bring it into, create a museum through this.
Oh, nice.
It's really gonna be great. So, um, well, that, that would go with that though, when they redid the, um, Little Red School, the house that isn't done anymore, um, there was a lot of, a lot of issues related to the inside of the building and being preserved, the artifacts that were in there, so. Is there a bigger amount of money that's coming down from the CPC to make those improvements so that the house is able to house? Always in progress in that.
We are.
Over the town, over, over the last year, so that face is already complete, the building is secure, the building's in good shape, um, and we've been, we've been working with getting a lot of the artifacts that had been in there that weren't really very valuable, that people just putting in here for a while.
Was that the building that had the?
Yes. Yeah.
Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
I knew it was stone.
That was at the very beginning of the project, we got that for the.
Wasn't the take it in? Because during construction of the senior center, it was poured down, I worked with the chain, and that's not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the pantomime, so people were in there all the time. So, but, but May, the chair of the CPC is here, Dan?
Yes.
Does, and has CPC allocated funds to get to the next phase of turning the central museum?
Oh, we have, uh, from last year.
I, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, I'd have to go back to the book to see exactly what it was for, but it was some money.
You started, yeah.
It's still, it hasn't been used yet.
No, it was just this little year, it started in November with an application.
Yes.
Went to the town meeting in April.
I just thought of.
And so July first was when the funds became available, so we really haven't tapped any of the CPC funds yet.
No. No, there's money in there to preserve the looms, um, any platform for just in order to take care of the weight and the building, um, the samplers, there's money in, in that for the samplers. You guys have always been great about helping us with different important things that we're trying to save.
Okay. Should you have a question?
Seth, can you go back to the map, please? Jeff? Any thought of extending it up to connect it to the walkway by the entrance to the, up the other end step by the street?
It's on the street, it's a walkway.
Go up there. Street, up where the curves, the sidewalk comes off the street and goes into the senior center. Any thought of connecting it up there, so it's connected to the street instead of just the parking lot?
Down on the lower right, yeah.
Wait, it says, uh, wait, right there.
Yeah.
In there.
Yeah.
Connecting in that area, so it connects to the sidewalk?
Um, I think it's going to put us in chapter one forty nine, or whatever. It's going to put us over pyramid class, if the word.
Yeah. Trying to keep the historical properties, um, together and accessible, and not start to redesign.
Well, it's just a problem pedestrian coming, I have to go all the way around to the parking lot to go back out, so. We, maybe we can address that a little bit.
Yeah, another place.
Yeah, I see.
Actually, Jeff's been extremely helpful on the lighthouse project, which we thank him, thanks. It's nice to have another commenter on the local side.
As you said.
Thank you.
Somebody that was helpful, so.
Well, just, uh, this is terrific, I think that they provided this act of accessibility and vision for the property, really just enhances the whole campus site and everything, it's terrific. I had the same question to Ben and Tia, and we've satisfied that, so the only other question I had is really not related to this, but you proposed putting benches which are very attractive on the site and surely, you know, useful to people enjoying the park like area, um. Are, is there, are there any, have you thought at all about those being, um, available as opportunities for memorial, um, donations? I would love that. Yes, not the, maybe through the website, um, we would tell people that these are opportunities needing on the community. Right, so I only mention that because it's, it's can't work, and it's untapped property, and so.
Oh, well, maybe we should.
Yeah, so I just wanted to see whether or not you had already.
I have.
So we go forward with that, just keep that in mind, and, uh, raise the best contact, I'm trying to sort of let stuff out, but, you know, I think people will be very excited about having opportunities something on that site. So, um, no, thank you for this work, I guess, what's the timetable on, on, we can have. I'm sorry.
As soon as we can have.
Yeah, yeah.
The, what happens is just like the lifeguards, a lot of the manual labor that's available in town is about to go back to college and school, so. Times of the essence.
Right, thank you so much. Any other questions about layout, certainly what we're voting on is just approving the, the walkway and the benches.
I have one question, it's not related to the walkway, but you mentioned the, some of the doors were getting widened for accessibility, which is great, it's amazing, but then inside, some of the doorways are not, is there, is there any thought, like, once someone would get into the building, if there's on some sort of way, as we make insurance through the building?
I didn't, even in here, we said that people will be able to get into the large peeping room, the van room, and from there you can get to four different doorways that look in the first floor rooms.
Okay.
Look into them. Obviously, to the question of historical housing, they can't really go in and change all those doorways.
That was my thing.
In the future, we're, you know. It's hard, we ran out of time, we ran out of money, in the future, it would be nice to do other things to make virtual opportunities for people who are partly in there. But we haven't been able to incorporate that yet, it's kind of a future plan.
That's, I mean, is to have a matter for a type of a seat for each property actually, and, um, people could virtually walk through the property, whether they're in California or just downstairs, you can't get upstairs.
That's really great, that's awesome.
We just felt that if a family comes, with a member or family member in a wheelchair, the entire family can go up and have something to do.
Right.
And that'd be a doorstep there anyways, so, I mean, it's not saying we're going to make stuff accessible for the person who's in a wheelchair.
Good. All right, any other, anybody else? Yes, Dan?
I'm not sure if it's on the map, it's not, there was a well next to the park, and is that where that little strip was?
That's not.
Okay, so that's not being in that.
It's, it's there, the. We've always felt that you moved away from the park a lot, but I think the CPC was kind of negative about that idea, they didn't want us to see us moving, so we kind of pushed it off to the side for that. We're going to wait till the park.
It's my nightmare that someone's going to call in, and you don't know where, it's just right on the edge.
Yeah. Oh, it is, right.
Yeah.
But no, we're not doing that.
No, we're not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Motion, anyone?
Will this let we approve the proposed layout of walkways and benches and whatnot, they should try.
Move by Mrs. Campfield, seven second, Mrs. Connelly, all favor.
Aye.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, keep, keep according to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, is an update on the Sitchwit Lighthouse Restoration Project, Sean? Is Sean here yet?
Sean's on the.
Oh, he's on, oh, okay.
Sean, yeah.
Hi folks.
Rick Palmer is also on, he's, oh, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'll start us off, um, we've met once before, my name's Rick Palmeroy, and, uh, my firm is acting as the owner's project manager on behalf of the town of Sitchwit with this, uh, this evening, we have Sean Willett from the Spencer Preservation Group, and Sean is the project architect in, in charge of this project. And we know that there's been, uh, uh, some very obvious, uh, delays in the project, uh, we're at a standstill, or we have been at a standstill, and we're here this evening to describe that to you and let you know the actions that we have taken and are taking, and give you a schedule update. And so what I'd like to do at this time is turn it over to Sean, and then if it's okay with the select board, I'll jump in, uh, and, uh, you know, assist Sean on the presentation as we go along, but, uh, he's really, uh, the key to this, and I think we have a pretty good timeline, uh, uh, update for you. This was presented, uh, to the, um, to the town administrator and the building committee, um, last week, and, uh, we've made some, uh, some great progress over the last couple of days, we have a change order in place, ready for signature by the town, uh, so that the contractor can get going, and we'll talk through all of those as we, uh, as we go through the presentation, so if it's okay with the select board, we'll turn it over to Sean.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, Rick. Let me share my screen here. All right. Are we live? I think we're live. Well, thank you, uh, thank you, Rick, for the introduction, uh, as he said, folks, my name's Sean Willett, I serve as the architect for the Lighthouse Restoration Project, and I'm part of the preservation architecture firm Spencer Preservation Group. Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight, uh, on the, uh, Lighthouse, and, uh, I've put together this brief presentation to show some of the progress we made, it's exciting historic discoveries, the challenges we faced, and the solutions we've come to. At the end of May, uh, abatement of the asbestos containing glass caulking was safely completed, uh, and immediately with, uh, much, uh, deserved buzz, the lantern was transported to Essex for replication. Uh, careful demolition of the deck and the inner dome began the following week, and the contractor's team proceeded cautiously to preserve those historic materials. Most interestingly, the soapstone wedges, which were the original lantern deck, or one of the original lantern decks, and embedded iron posts from the eighteen forty one lantern were carefully salvaged, uh, it's, it's a little bit of a reminder for, uh, anybody who may not be aware. In eighteen forty one, the lighthouse contractor and engineer named Winslow Lewis was contracted to rebuild the twin lighthouses on Thatcher Island in Rockport, as well as the one here in Sitchwit, at about the same time and written on the exact same contract. These soapstone slabs perfectly matched those scattered across Thatcher Island and Rockport, uh, and they were previously of unknown origin to the town. Uh, and rather humorous, humorously, I found that the, the lighthouse committee in Rockport had let me know that they were unaware that these pie shaped pavers had a historic significance, and in fact, I think one was used as a stepping stone for a stairway. You can see here some of the iron posts that were, uh, written about and specified in the eighteen forty one contract, we were able to recover those and salvage them. As expected, uh, with historic structures, we make discoveries, and sometimes they manifest as exciting, such as the salvaged soapstone and iron columns, other times not so much. Our original design for this restoration project was to preserve the outer two layers of brick at the top of the lighthouse, uh, and use those outer two layers, we call them whites, uh, to act as a form for the new concrete dome. During demolition, we discovered that the second to outermost layer was in poor condition and not well bonded to the outermost layer, which was actually rebuilt in two thousand and five. As such, we determined that those two outer layers would need to be taken down and then rebuilt together. Our contractor subsequently did so, he took down the outer two layers down to about the four and a half foot mark to establish a flat base from which we could rebuild. Uh, pricing from the contractor to rebuild those outer two layers, which includes staging materials, labor, and the tiebacks for the concrete dome totaled approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. In this scheme, the concrete would be formed and built first, and then the outer two brick whites second. Before proceeding with that work, our design team, which comprised us, Spencer Preservation Group, and our structural engineers, Coastal Engineering, uh, we evaluated the condition of that flat brick face and determined that it was not suitable for anchoring vertical helix ties into the top layers for that concrete dome. At that time, we met with the town, and we suggested that further demolition and reconstruction, uh, of the brick walls may be necessary to accommodate those vertical helix ties. We began considering alternate ways to comply with the structural needs of the dome and reduce cost, time, and preserve as much historic material as possible. While this careful investigation takes place, it's important to recall that the contractor is continuing to work on the lantern at their shop in Essex. Uh, in the second half of July, we visited the shop to do an inspection of the lantern frame before its galvanization to review window repairs and other metalwork. The lantern frame was approved for galvanization and then returned to the shop for reconstruction on August first. Our design team prepared drawings for the contractor to start pricing out those possible rebuilding scope, uh, for the masonry. Prior pricing suggested at the time that we could have expected a change order cost rising to four hundred thousand or more. And so we doubled down on reviewing the design and evaluating alternative solutions to reduce the cost, time, and preservation of historic materials. Uh, by the end of August, uh, so not too long ago, our. Excuse me, Sean, Sean, please. By the end of July, not August. Oh, thank you very much, thank you very much. Uh, by the end of July, uh, our team finalized an alternate solution to eliminate the vertical helix ties and therefore rebuilding of that additional masonry. We did this by increasing the thickness of the dome wall and reducing the outer two brick layers to one. And while I'm not a structural engineer, I can give kind of a high level understanding of our solution, the original design utilizes these vertical helix ties, and let me go back a slide, uh, to anchor the concrete dome down into the masonry to resist lateral forces from wind and uplift or overturning of the dome. The rebuilding would have been.
Can I pause you for a minute?
Yes, please.
I, I just have a question, I know it.
No, please, please, I'm happy, I'm happy.
Can you define for me what the dome is?
Yes, so originally, uh, the dome was constructed, uh, with brick and infill stones loosely laid and just kind of held together by gravity in its self-supporting, uh, construction type. Rather than recreating that in brick, uh, which is extremely difficult to do, uh, nowadays, and our structural engineer determined was not, uh, not an efficient way to reconstruct the dome, we're doing that with concrete, and when I say dome, what I mean is the interior uh, of this upper level of the lighthouse actually has a shallow dome on it.
Okay.
On the inside of it.
Thank you.
Yes, you're right, you're right, no, there, don't worry, there will not be a big dome on the top of the lighthouse by the time we're done.
I just didn't know, like, what the extent of it was.
Absolutely, no, that's a great question, thank you. Uh, so the rebuilding would have been required to keep those vertical helix ties for, to prevent pulling out. And, uh, by reducing this brick to one outer layer instead of two, and increasing the mass or the weight of the concrete dome with a thicker wall, the structural calculations work out to not require those vertical helix ties, that is to say, the dome is heavy enough on its own to not require additional anchoring to resist lateral forces and overturning or uplift. Uh, at the time, uh, those same pricing indicators suggested that this could result in considerable savings, bringing the cost down below what that original proposal was for rebuilding the outer two whites. It also further reduces delays needed for reconstruction of that massive masonry wall farther down, uh, interior corbling and other details, yes, Rick? Can I, can I add something to that, Sean? Please. You know, during the discovery, Sean mentions, uh, several times, uh, the original a hundred and sixty thousand dollar price, uh, that, uh, that was, uh, a cost or price that we had, uh, put together based upon information from the contractor and Spencer Preservation Group, but it is no longer valid, uh, because of the findings, um, so it, it.
So it was an early price, but once it was determined that the design had to change, that $160,000 price sort of went away. So we're faced with a range of 120 for one design alternative or over $400,000 for another design alternative.
That's right.
I have.
Yes, please.
And I'm sorry for jumping in, but I
No, no, quite all right.
So is the concrete dome? And I don't know if I'm using the right terms. I'm not an engineer. Is it precast pour content that's wasted, or is it all filled in there?
Nope. It's poured and cast in place. So they build a form of a dome on the inside. They build a flat form on the outside, and they pour the concrete between the two, and when the concrete cures, they basically peel off or take off those forms.
Okay, the engineers are stating that a concrete, this concrete dome is more structurally sound than two layers of bricks.
Yes, yes. Yeah, rather. The the if I could add to that, the original thickness of this wall and actually the thickness of the brick wall down to where the lighthouse flares out is actually six layers thick, six vertical layers of brick thick. So we were originally going to reconstruct just the dome portion on the top of the lighthouse. We were going to replace four of those whites, the four inner whites, with the concrete dome, and we were going to leave the two outer whites.
Thank you.
My pleasure. And so just to wrap up here. The design change was approved by our design team. It was priced by the contractor, and as Rick mentioned, a change order had been prepared for about $132,000, which is about 30 less than the original change order price for just rebuilding those two upper brick whites. It results in a new contract, some of just over 1.2, and still well within our construction budget. And I'd just like to close out with some kind of last-minute good news that the galvanized lantern room has been returned and reassembled in the Essex shop. The contractor will begin reframing and cladding the rest of us. And so the intent is that the lantern will essentially be fully rebuilt, except for the glass, and then transported back to the lighthouse where it will be hoisted on top with an updated completion date estimated for the end of October. And I thank you very much for your patience as we work through these challenges, these discoveries, which is expected in historic structures, but we look forward to continuing this important work.
If I may, before we get to some questions, if I may, I just add a few things to this. This has been a very fluid process over the last month, month and a half, and we're at the point right now where the change order is ready to be issued to the contractor. The contractor expects to be on-site, remobilized next week, at which point they would have to install staging around the entire existing tower. And the plan is to begin the formwork the following Monday, the 21st of August. And within five days, we should be ready for our first concrete pore of that dome. So they're prone and ready to get started right away. There is some masonry preparation that needs to take place during, before the formwork can start, and our plan is to have the mason in there next week while the staging is going up to accomplish that. Also, while this is going on, there is contract work that the contractor can be accomplishing in the inside of the tower, the repointing of the existing granite blocks and masonry. And Sean and I were out there today looking at a sample, sample area, which has been approved. So we're looking at really hitting this hard beginning of next week.
Thanks, Rick. Sorry. Judicial questions? Can you guys stop sharing the screens when you see?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. No, this is very exciting, and you know, it's all the buzz is still around town, so to have this update is very useful, and Jim's been doing a great job with, you know, stuff. They start working so well with the town. Eric, yeah, so we're, we're well within budget at this point, which is great. It looked as though at one point that maybe we were going to have to go back to CTC, which we now jump out. Thank you. That's great. That's really good news. Thank you. I did have one. Just a question about the soapstone. What is the discussion about the reuse or the preservation or the coolness of this?
Well, the soapstone. Yeah, yeah. Get down there quick and stake your claim. The soapstone is the property of the town. I understand that the historical society may have a piece or maybe taking a piece. They've got at least one, I believe, of the original iron columns, but that salvaged material is the property of the of the town.
And where is it now?
At the moment, I believe it's on the site, protected by the fence. Yep.
It's gonna, it is protected, right?
That's right. It's a way that it's
We've got this wonderful ancient stone. The kitchen's all
There are cameras down there, folks.
I'm just gonna make that connection since we have this tone right here and make sure that those, that opportunity is sought for, like, folks that might be able to use that. Um, I just want to make sure it's in fact of us, and thank you for all the work. I just want to make sure that, and I know what your answer is going to be, but I still have to ask it, that you're confident that this change in structural engineering and the concrete versus the breaking, if my mind makes sense, is going to be stronger and a better solution.
Yes, our Yeah, our structural engineers have looked into this considerably, and we have their, we have full faith in them, and they have the full faith in their calculations that this is, this is the appropriate, appropriate action for us to take.
Are there any other lighthouses that have a similar interior?
I would say Sitchwood is fairly unique. It's such, such a modestly sized and accessible lighthouse. We don't see a lot of those small lighthouses that have been extended so many times over the years. I don't know if anybody's gotten a chance to look through my report. It's not like reading. Let me assure you that. But it's gone, it's gone through so many changes over the years. In 1811, it was only that flared granite brick base. It didn't have that brick tower on it. That's how short it was. And so then they extended it 15 more feet with a brick tower. They still felt like it didn't cut it, so they added a little bit more. They changed the light configurations to make it more unique. It's a really, really unique lighthouse. It's gone through so many changes. So I think it'd be hard to find one that really stands as precedent for this.
Thank you. Eric.
Yeah, I'd like to make a suggestion that when this is done, that there be some exhibit done at the library about it, and that the entire project is documented so that, you know, people understand what's been done.
Yeah.
Have you taken photos along the way?
Oh, yeah. I've got, I've got more photos than we know what to do with, so.
Great. Well, any other questions from the audience? See, Jim, anything additional?
Sean, Rick, you have an estimated completion date for the project at this point. We're still working on that.
Well, the this, this is Rick. The estimated completion date is October 31st. The original completion date was September 15th, and we've extended it a month and a half. We're hope, the hopes are that we can deliver sooner than that, but we want to be realistic. And at this point, just remember that the lantern room has not been delayed, so it's back, and it's being, it's been reassembled, and they're going to start fitting it out. So by the by the time, can you, can you hear me? By the time that we're done with the concrete pores and the masonry and the closure, we'll be ready to pop that lantern room. The lantern room will be waiting for us to get back up there. So our goal is to be done sooner than that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much, gentlemen. It's a great project, and it sounds like lots of folks have loved the U S D two, and we look forward, what, Jim has another question?
No, the board had approved the original contract. This is 132,000. We have a semi-final change order, so probably the best thing to do would be the board will prove that change.
To approve the change order, even though it's within the larger amount of service of the contractor. Okay. All right. I think we have a motion. So what is that, 132,000?
Yeah, 132,575.
132,575?
Yes.
Any motion?
Yes, please.
132,575?
Yes. Looked at the select board approved change order as described tonight for the completion of the Lighthouse project, you're leading on 132,575.
Second, motion by Mrs. Campfield, second by Mrs. Connolly, all favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, this was going to be a late on report, but it's relevant to this, is that the historic society has already begun work on programming to enhance the experience of the topic of the Lighthouse. So that's in the works. I think we should have a greeting party when it comes back. So if you can line the truck street and watch transported back.
Well, we know this, but
Right. What is it?
It's the only lucky that people have said, go all those people out at the lighthouse.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. If you had to line the streets and stop them at wherever. Yeah, I agree. No.
I was able to go to the workshop with Kevin. It's pretty impressive.
It was excellent. They've got some great pictures.
Where is it?
Up in Essex.
Oh, Essex.
That's where the shop is. They have a barn.
Essex mask or?
Essex mask. And we covered the eye water, building it. He was impressed. So first day, it's just the skeleton, but it's steel skeleton. It's just bulk. So we were requested, followed with him, and it's just taking measurements to make sure it fits, the exact same height as opposed to the saw, and making sure that it won't be But no, I was, I was impressed with it. You know, we're also looking at these connection. It's kind of a strange connection to get the lightning rod in on the top, so that was a discussion of how to do that with the new structure, how do you physically get somebody with their hands to fight their, so that something is still being far against the So it was, it was very interesting. Yep. And then the couch, the engineers did, which we, we make them work out all and done a lot of the year, better right by your computer, and kept relations that were We like that.
Yes, two engineers too. All right. So we have
So now, now we're getting the exciting stuff, whatever advice we're waiting for on that. Not the lighthouse, but the update on the guy night project and what's on our list. So with that, I'll hand it over to Bob from the environmental department, and he can give you an update.
There you go. I'm so slow in the service. Nobody's going to be keeping this stuff. I was for a commission. Yes, we're going to update you on the patient info program. It's ongoing right now. Instructions Just wanted a quick agenda is go through the dome that's going on, why are you, yes? And to talk about what we've done so far, I will finish the project, shipping where the work is being run.
Excuse me, couldn't please speak up so that those of us
Sure.
Yeah, if you could try to speak a little bit.
How's that?
Okay.
The photo there is a screen capture or video. That is the situation. That's what we're trying to stop. Trying to stop clean water from getting in this. All right. So there's a lot of reasons for that. This itself is a problem, and it takes up space in the sewer, and I think this goes to the wastewater treatment plant. I consider paying a treat clean water, and it stops you from expanding use of the system, you know, because it takes effect fast. But it really is a symptom of the conditioning, as soon as this, so we need to fix this, as soon as this stuff is met. So what are we doing? Well, we did an investigation between 21 and 22. The town took on the inflow part. The inflow part is the stormwater that enters the sewer through some pumps, catch basins, driveway, your anti-airings, essentially. And that peak flow, I'm talking about peak flows here, like a worst-case condition, that we estimated up to 30,000 gallons per day were prevented from coming into the system. Take a next rainstorm, you should be less water running into the system. The town, it's something. The infiltration rehabilitation that we're doing now is targeting up to 210,000 gallons. We found more than that. Some of this is going to be very expensive. So we're trying to get the lowest thing, survey everything that's paying for the bottom. Now, we're not going to take out 210,000. This is not the way it works. It's sort of, if you don't do this, talking nicely and in the higher area, it's sealed with sewer, it's sort of like playing an attrition micro hole. Right? And you fix the leak here, pops up over there. If it's there, pops up somewhere else. All right, we want to prevent that. So the standard is industry-wide, you say, okay, we got to take out, take out four gallons per day, really get one gallon a day. And so it's all Well, we have a little bit of a different approach. This technology is now allows us to get better, better efficiency of that. And we didn't get close to two in one. Now, again, this is peak. All right, this is when the tide is high, the groundwater is high, and it's when your treatment plant really gets to that point where we can't handle the flow. That's what we're trying to knock off. Okay? So
Sorry, but everybody understands that some of the flows leave giving us when we have a mess, a bunch of our old Easter or something. It's not that many gallons per day on an average day.
Right. And it's assuming that they're all leaking at the same time. All right. So we went out in 2021. We found a whole bunch of leaks. When you measured flow, we came back in 2023, some of them were leaking, some of them weren't, and we had other leaks. So this sort of thing, you have to act, you have to have your competence, and you'll really tighten it up. So program, excuse me, program includes 140 segments of sewer with one man hold. That's about 30,000 feet wide and a half lines. That length of pipe is going to be lined with an interior pipe, right? So you can seal the interior pipe. The piping habit we're attacking here is clay, and it has joints every four feet. Well, as groundwater goes up, groundwater goes down, those gaskets and those joints deteriorate, and that will keep happening forever. Right? So if you don't seal it, you get more and more leaks as time goes on. But we're also looking at building that also, the connection between building and sewers. And that's always been the most difficult thing to fix in these sort of programs. But they also happen to be the part where the pipe is using it more worse condition than the main pipe, because it's shallow, trees and roots get in there, it's frosty as it, and all those joints break apart and open up. And when you get an heavy rainfall, it all comes to the earth, so. Right? You don't see it every day because it's shallow, the water directs away. So of those 515 or so connections, 90 of them were actively leaking this spring. There were some others that were leaking in 2021. That means we have to pump route into those, stop them from leaking before we can review the house. All right. So about 18% of our store are learning what we What we do is we line the pipe, and then a robotic cutter goes back in and opens up all those little lateral machines, and then we seal that tube with a short liner. But we're actually extending this liner all the way up to the cast iron pipe that goes out of the house. Right? That's where the sewer ends and the plumbing system. So we avoid any plumbing or things or anything. You don't have to get into the house. We've identified, actually, 72 locations now, because we found a few more that were leaking. So we're going to take care of those. And as we're out there, and as the house has been out there, Bill Brant found three manholes that were leaking this spring. So we're addressing those two. Project really centers on, say, how do we road to the ocean? So that whole area up in here is where we're focusing on. And in particular, two locations, where you see a lot of flooding, surface water, and sulfur. This Trentman Lane, Marshall Priscilla Ave area. Seaside River, yeah, Seaside Road, a few avenues to use over the years. And down towards, remember, Seaport project? Like where that comes in, that whole area there with San Hills, San Hills West Water Pumping Station goes on the water, that area too, just so people have a better idea of. I just grabbed some little images, and this whole neighborhood here around these, these little ponds and these wet areas are going to be sealed from the house all the way through the ban holes and the main pipe and everything.
And are we starting that work now?
It's been ongoing.
It's been ongoing, yes. But in fact, this whole area here, notice that Seaside Road, Egypt Beach Road, you have the Egypt Beach parking lot, this area here leaks so badly, we let in a router that just to stop the leaks. As we're out, the town has their contract. As we're out in the town, let's get a contract, the contract and replace it, so I'll show you a little bit of one about that. Alright, this is the Sand Hills site, mainly brought in to see you to two at apps, following app phone road, as they go up the hill. We're gonna seal those, all those ladders, manholes, the whole thing of these areas here. So we hope to get much better results than if we just delete today. Hope the next manhole, the next lateral they're engaged. So we got pictures, uh, to show you what's been going on. On the left-hand side is the before, and this area right here on the top, those are roofs and with the, with the uh the joint that separated from the pipe, and this is all clean water moving out through, like, this is the liner. And the liner is done from inside the main lines. We seal that up. So that's the simplest one, this is a, a manhole, um, it's hard to see, but this big piece of pipe here is called a drop connection, there's a sewer hole in here, it drops down, it comes out here. There's actually another pipe coming in from this angle, almost literally all around where that pipe came in. So looking from the top down, it looked like that, you can also see some staining and some water droplets, like at the top or brick, this, the brick is used to bring the manhole frame and casting up to the road well. He's a notorious leak, but the time it's trapped is. And that's what it looks like now. So the whole thing's been sealed, it crowded the leak, and then they put cementitious material around the board to seal it up. So this is that Egypt Beach Road was talking about, all these little blue raindrops are leaks that we found, and here's an example of one. Sorry about the angle on this, but sometimes they have to drive the black camera up on the side. Um, and the third one here, and you can see the joint of the pipe, you see, you know, this, these three leaks plus a few more, probably between five or ten gallons a day. Which is ten, fifteen thousand gallons. About five million gallons a minute, sorry, which is about ten to fifteen thousand dollars today, just in this one session. So that's why your house is gonna be destroyed. Um, and one more, now this is a little different, this here is a building lateral connection, it's here, there's one down here, it's leaking. And you can see all this water in here, it's all in water. This is that after they put the main liner in, they have to drought this, they pump drought in to seal it, they're gonna come back in and just, this connection too. They're gonna come back in and put one of those short liners over those, those ladders, the seals, and you can see all the water, the pipe and some water. So it is effective. So where are we? We're almost halfway done. Uh, we have one more street to do the main line lining on. They, they're doing the, this short little building lateral connections, uh, is primarily focused from now on. Um, in a couple of weeks, the longer one here, all the way to the house crew will be out here, we'll probably do two mobilizations, so in a month, not two months, we'll have that all wrapped up. The project was expected to go until maybe February, I think we can get done a lot faster than that, they have some equipment, they can do two of those laterals at once. So we can get some more protection on that. Um, the sewer replacement work was gonna be done later this fall. Nobody's out there, you know, Egypt control here, back holes, they can back it up. And one thing that's important for us is that we've acquired a contractor to come back from the side groundwater and do a warranty inspection. So you come back out with the crews, they'll, they're still, totally, it's TV crews, and make sure everything's, you know, it's not, they have, they have. We're done.
That's the beginning.
Do you wanna?
Board first, Harry, anything? So how much do we think we're gonna save gallons per day? What would you bet on the water?
Well, it's tricky, because we, we give a little time to prove that we have to take water at any time, but it's, it's hard to tell an exact figure. Uh, we think we are making some savings, but we'll just have to see how, how our flows go, hopefully flows decrease. Uh, obviously it will, but at the same time, you know, we will have a couple of buildings in rain which probably want to, so we're getting a lot out. But at the same, you know, same time.
But when we say the buildings in rain bush, we, we monitor those, right, we meter that.
Oh yeah, no, 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 I know, but it's, you, you can't really meter sewage.
No, I know, I, I understand.
What you have.
I, I guess where I'm going is, for example, we, we did White House Point. Uh, we didn't, it's been done for a couple of years now, right?
No.
Do you have any?
And our, and our rates, uh, our flows, our average flows have gone down.
By?
I have to have will to, I don't know, that looks like a problem in this form, but it's something we can get.
My little problem was, if they see a point, we have massive drop.
Yeah, I, I.
So that drove the numbers way up because we want to check this.
I understand, in some years, we have terrible storms that sea water comes in, but at, at least where we're looking right now, Sand Hills is similar to White House Point and Egypt Beach, we're not talking about somewhere like warm up the hill where they're not as affected by storms and uh everyone's affected by drought, so I, I guess just from my information, I'm just trying to calculate, are we good?
And we are too, and we would love to, we're, we're just always a little on the conservative side, because we don't want to see how we want it to do in time. And see how much it starts decreasing there, and people will update, I don't want to estimate, say, they go fifty thousand gallons a day and that will be heck. You know, I just, because it all, a lot of it depends on the weather and everything else, or we think, we've made some huge straps.
But you know what we're losing now, right, just based on where you, the sand hills. You, you're seeing the water in the pipes, and they're, are we able to calculate how much there is coming in?
Yeah, we did measure the flow years of manholes and we can estimate with the camera. And that's where I came up with the two hundred and ten thousand gallons, nothing in it really, in the end, you know, will get much less than that. But he's right, it's that what happens is the other parts of the sewer are about older. So we're, we're kind of chasing this at this point, the, the benefit of this is that this is gonna spend, these sewers basically end up, they're just alive. Uh, and they may not play with these bad guys, this will extend it for another hundred years.
Another hundred?
Another hundred years.
In those sections.
In those sections.
That's reasonable.
So that's, that's sort of the investment you're making, that, then the proof really isn't put in, see at the wastewater treatment facility, if flows do not go down, then there's something going wrong.
Right.
We have to back up. But the flow shouldn't go down, so.
All the while, while knowing that the weather has an impact as well as the storms have an impact, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it's more of the trend we're looking for.
Right, I was just gonna say that, what is that, that period that we look at? To analyze, is it six months, is it eight months, like when do you decide that what we did actually worked?
Like, I mean typically, you, you can be a cycle, you have to be able to get them up a lot. But, but it's not as easy as that, because we are also looking at the addition of, of uh, you know, a couple, a couple of the major projects that we.
Right, so like you said, some is.
Yeah, we'll ball, we'll ball back and see how much we save, we, and, and let me just clarify, that's a multi-phase system, two hundred and ten thousand gallons is not just from this project, that's a multi-front project.
Right, and. Yes, the key here would be to see a drop of flow at the wastewater plant, summer season as we had prior, right? And it's, I think it's also important that your treatment plant is still old, and its equipment is getting worn out. So the more you run it, the more you use, the worse it's gonna be for you, so this, we can shave these peaks off and drop that down, so we're not, you know, the plant has to back water up in the sewer now to hold it back from these big storms, right? You can avoid that from now, I think that's okay.
Right.
Well, we, we can't give you a D number, but it's in the order of matter of ten to sort of thousands.
We're very optimistic about it, and, and you know, you just have legitimately, but line and just ban all of them, up, it's like, yeah, we'll give it back out to the street, spreading it out, and we're gonna make some some serious improvements by using, you know, up-to-date pipes and materials, and manholes, so that we can get that and make that a ceiling system that that's part of.
Uh, one more question, when you said five hundred and fifteen laterals, those are into the houses, right?
Right.
So there's five hundred and fifteen laterals, five hundred and fifteen houses that are being.
No, I, I, that we took, they were worth seventy-five to ninety.
Okay.
That's, that's the scope of this project, because there's significantly more ladders to throw down, obviously.
I was just gonna say, it's a low number.
It, well, they, they investigated, you know, say five hundred services.
Okay.
I don't know if they're gonna believe what someone said, seventy-five to ninety services.
Okay.
They were gonna do lower.
We'll do the joint at the main for all of those where we can, we can't always put a liner in the main house to the house, just because of the way the pipe comes in, right?
Right.
So a lot of those, we just can't do.
And that's new technology, that used to be, you know, that's only, that's pretty recent. Years.
It's not, yeah, it's, it's something very severe.
Thank you. Susan, anything?
Uh, yeah, I actually have a question, so you mentioned we'll always be chasing, what's, what are that sort of, what's the next? Where, where?
Yeah, so um, we're actually sort of finding other manhole, manhole segments that we might wanna, if, so we're under budget right now.
Okay.
And if we have the budget and it makes sense to do, we might want to add a few more streets for this.
Okay.
But we've already identified, we have hierarchy of where these things should be addressed. Um, like I said, we tried to do the least expensive ones first, to see what the impact would be, but the idea is to continue this comprehensive. Uh, so we have two spots where it's very comprehensive work, it's just a set of work to link those together, so the whole system becomes tighter.
Okay.
Now, some of these we will be estimation part, that's, that's our, so we might not be able to do this technology, and that'll have to be. Some of these sewers just need to be replaced.
So we evaluated the whole system two years ago, and that we identified different areas that we could get the most bang for our buck, like the I and I money. And was it seven or nine, if you remember, they just.
No, seven or nine.
And I'm sorry, I, you know, I used to know that company head, but there, there was a significant amount, we went, we went out for the lowest dang, so we broke out, we were allocated I and I money, we are going after the the biggest spots too long.
So, but that's good news that you're at, that's, uh, sure running, yeah, other low coming through. And then I have a question, I know you're saying you're hoping for tens of thousands to reduce production or demand, is that, I know you're, it's hard to say enough, but what would be your hope? To your, you don't have to hit the market, but you can have a place while we don't get it, but I'm just curious, like, what are our goals?
Too many people voted us in the past. No, I, I, you know, I don't know, I, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll let Bob answer that.
Maybe you could have a goal and not keep the goal, because we have more, it's, uh, less things up for our.
So with, with repairs we have, we think there's a hundred thousand gallons a day that we can stop from coming in this system from these leaks that were. Let's let me.
Very peaceful.
That, as soon as the liner ends, will be stopped our project, now at least the next joint down, right, so that's what we have a little bit of chasing.
So the water can travel along the sewer and then commit a future leak down the lines, water things and.
We're trying, and that's why we're trying to do it so comprehensive, prevent as much of that as possible. So that's our goal, and I think we'll get much less than that on a year-to-year basis, just because it's get, the sewers getting worse, right, so you'll take out a hundred thousand gallons per day, which you, you're not gonna see that at your. That's, that's, that's the drawback.
Well, but then we'd be able to see the difference, and then, uh, and you can take the storms out of there, so another day's what's happening.
Yeah, we, you, you will see the most effect during this.
Right.
That's when you see that the biggest.
Right. Hopefully.
Uh, just, well, let me um, answer most of my questions, I would um, not in a rush, but I think it would be very responsible for it, if you could do a timeline, starting five years ago or so, maybe twenty seventeen on, look at the, the plant capacity, and do a timeline. Plant capacity, say, every, whatever's inappropriate, quarter, half year, whatever. And then layer on that, see if when projects start, see if when project completes, storm, drought. I think, because that, you know, it is, as you said, you want to look at the trends, and I don't feel like I have a good sense, uh, we started this, you know, in earnest, but the, the analysis, where the greatest impact was gonna be, it would be nice to see one time model where things are and, you know, uh, and answer some of those questions.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be pretty, I think it'd be pretty physical for us to do.
Yeah.
Uh, but we had a spreadsheet on something like that, I, I just want to update this project, I would want that, the overall topic with it.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about significant detail, I'm talking about, you know, I'm gonna get onto our process net plan at any moment, right? So figure out what the, 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 the data points.
And then go after our monthly averages for the past five years, and then pick up small.
Exactly, yeah, whatever they just put in the analysis, and then, and then, and lay over that, where, what, what do you get money on?
And we analyze that data, it is. Uh, but, you know, one of the great things we could do is, one of the things we could do is, oh, this was online, this, this was online, yes, yeah, but that'd be.
Those, those would be the significant data points that really had us to sort of blow the cap, and to the questions that the speakers just asked, is that timer? You know, when we did Cedar Point, it was, it was with the expectation that, that savings there would compensate the, your larger company.
Yep.
So these are, you know, we're making, we're making decisions on this information, so we should have a.
No, I understand, so it's a graphical sort of representation problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're also supposed to talk about.
We ask the prioritizing for constituents, so we're gonna want to have that information, you know.
Yep.
Super relevant, and that'd be very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? One of the next couple of questions, that leads to monthly updates.
No, uh.
We're doing.
We could do an overall, we could do an overall sewer update sometime in the future, we'd gotta be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll want that, that, that's what I gotta say. Yeah, we have the data.
No, the data is good.
I have a question, Amber, by ten minutes, so. I understand that even town customers are paying for the service, who pays for that? Who pays to replace the lateral from the main to the house? I think it's a resident, right?
I'd love to answer that question, so what typically happens if you sell your home now, it's inspected, if it does not pass, the lateral gets uh, replaced, has to replace the farmhouse, has to sell, just like a type of bias system. Um, one of the things that we've run into on these, we can go and do a lateral halfway up and build property and stop, you know, we're still getting a lot of I and I. So what we've worked out is, we've worked out a release from people to give us a meeting to do it, and it costs a hundred dollars each, and then we run the lateral, the remainder of the lateral, we line it up to the test time. So that we can do, we're already there, we're doing it, we're halfway up, there's no sense leaving it, and then taking all that I and I in our system, and I and the people that brought to, to replace the system. So that's kind of an innovative thing, we came up with this.
Seems like a pretty inexpensive solution, it is an expensive solution, however, if a lateral is failed as a septic system is failed, the homeowner shouldn't that be responsible for any excessive amount of dollars? Whether it's betterment or what, I don't know, but it would seem to me that if someone perhaps discovers that a lateral is crushed through storms or whatever as a septic system was failed, and a septic system today is around four trillion, I would say that it would be well worth homeowner and the town constituent for that to step up and pay for that lateral.
We do, if there's a lateral that's failed or crushed or something for that effect, people gonna notice, you guys will probably get the next call, why are they doing this to me, but, you know, we, we do bring that up. There is a lateral.
So if the lateral, I know you can't really hear, if the lateral is failed, you notify.
In the sewer, the owner is notified, they will notify the homeowner that the lateral was failed, and they have to replace it.
By X amount of time?
Yeah, it's hard to say, there's not a system that we can go up and ticket people or anything for that, so, you know, most people work with us, because if they don't fix it, it's gonna back up into that. if they don't fix it, it's gonna back up into that house and that's kind of the last thing we want. Uh, so so.
And you charge them for that.
They do it themselves.
They bring some.
They they bring somebody else in to replace the ladder. Does that make sense, Ann?
To a degree. I just want to make sure that, again, I think it's great over the last year or two when a house casses, like type five, you have to, if your lateral is failed, it has to be replaced at your expense. Then two, a lot of these times, they're old, they've been in forever, and it really is up to the homeowner to maintain this. I have to maintain my septic system, therefore it is he's there to maintain a lateral.
It's inherent in every breeze.
Yes.
But.
Everybody's undergripping on that.
But if the tunnel, it has to be placed it so that some of us, more in particular, can get some sewer then with a betterment on it and let the tunnel run the whatever to the house. It's done. Homeowner doesn't have to think about it and then this is better.
Yeah, yeah, it's absolutely understandable. I mean, from that, I will point out that having learned from the seed, you can get the seed project. There were, Kevin will say, mu- many, many broken, cracked, displaced um laterals that nobody knew. So sometimes the owner might think it's just going right into the groundwater.
I understand.
So that, you know, that's hard to to.
But if you are cameraing all of this at this point in time, then you know that this is failed.
That's a good point.
Yeah, if we if we find that if.
So if you're in five hundred fifteen, right?
If we find any of the, you know, we notify the residents. They have a choice. They can either, why we're cleaning lying out section, it just starts going a little further. We're already there, we're mobilized, they can save money on that. If they don't wanna do that, we'll notify themselves if they happen to be there on their own.
So I guess the question would be on the five hundred fifteen that you did evaluate, right?
There were.
You evaluated five hundred fifteen, you chose ninety to work on, seventy five ninety, right? What happens to those other four hundred and ten?
Well, they weren't leaking again. There was.
Ask that.
No, they weren't. We didn't notice any flows that were coming out. We've actually had people, they have an engineer actually believe in all buildings. They've got all the videos, very exciting stuff. And and see what's going on. And so if there is water coming in or they find a leak or loops or anything like that, that's when it's addressed and it's brought up on our weekly meeting. Hey, we found X house and this is what's going on. How do we wanna handle it? Well, now, sometimes uh the contractors don't work at a loop, as they can probably loop out and then they can get a liner and sometimes they'll say, we're not able to do that. They're not able to do it, that the homeowner gets notified that they have a problem with the sewer, they should replace the lateral as soon as possible. If they don't, they should expect that kind of.
That's not wrong.
Or I think, yeah, I think, yeah, we, I understand it, I understand, you know, I understand it, sorry, you know, maybe we do need to look at a little bit more of a stricter solution. Well, it was it was a lot of money to replace the lateral. I I I know you're gonna tell me it depends on the length, but.
Well, you know, I'm not gonna give a dollar. It can it can be anywhere from four thousand to nine thousand dollars.
All right, because but I'm wondering is, does it require a, that for some people the service would, so.
You know what? I think they have had a couple instances where people uh what to do with it, having, you know, dealt with a better end or or worked something.
Yes.
You know, it's not, it's not happened in a few years, but they're at that.
Well, maybe to Ann's point, which says we're all listening, it's another sort of policy or procedure that we're going to table again. So it's more consistent, yeah, that's addressed. And they should, frankly, deadline all. I mean, something fairly egregious.
And and you know what? There can't be a deadline added to it. We just need a means to enforce it in in a uh you know, we can't cut off this sewer or we can't cut off the water.
No, we can start penalizing them, you know, whatever.
So one of the things that we have done in the past is we've used that, the some pump. Um, you know, if you have some pump, pay a certain rate, that could sometimes add up the bill, you know, to force people to replace the ladder.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for coming in and giving us the update.
Any questions?
Looking forward to it.
It works.
Oh, yeah, I guess. Seeing about I and I for twenty years, so. All right, Kevin, you have a contract?
We have a very exciting contract. This is part of line sprite. So um we work uh with consortium and we give them how much we sprite each year as well as all the pounds um in the separate district. We go up to bid, um it's multiple unit prices for about everything, general plastic, mining, almost school list. They tally everything up and then we get deal with the contract, the uh lowest responsible there. This year, and I mean this last year, our lowest responsible bidder, what is the K five?
It's just a one-year contract?
It can be up to three years. It all depends on the consortium. Sometimes if people are not happy with the work. If we're three meters of move, say, two, four times a year, if we're not happy with one of the contracts, because remember, again, God will pay the two, whatever, we will actually take a vote. If we're not happy with the contract, we will have the contract.
And I know, you can get for chapter ninety, how much are we allocating this year? I didn't see that in years. So I know, I know they're just giving you prices, so we're, do you know how much work that you're contract out on this?
Um, I think last year, Nancy, you know, we.
Couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we were we were over a hundred thousand dollars, but we didn't take them off, right?
And once we approve this, will we start seeing them? And that's three o'clock, right around town?
If you're up at three o'clock in the morning.
Two to about here.
But you might see them to buy. Um, but I ideally um they're a little very too with the weather they're behind because of all rain we've received. So uh we would try to get in uh this.
Question to the board, anyone?
Just one on the on the different projects there that are the rotary, where you're gonna start the project, did they do the striping or is that gonna come out of us? Like for environmental protection?
Well, um.
And vinyl, for example.
So in vinyl, we would, we would strike.
It's not part of the.
No, it would be part of the contract. And it depends on what techniques, so we decide. You know, if. Yep.
All right, you have a motion for striking.
Uh, move to award contract to K five corporation Rockham Ness to provide big marketing effective seven months, twenty twenty three through all extensions, through all extensions at unit prices.
Who's by Mrs. Campfield? Second, second by Miss Harrison, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update. Okay, do. We are moving into that time of the evening during the summer where we interview candidates for many of our uh boards and committee opening. It was a moment while we had all our good backup that Lorraine and Ben and Michelle together. Um, is Jeffrey Wilson here? Jeff, you've been here a long time. Come on up. Just here to interview for the public building. So Jeffrey, just your your name, your address, and a little bit about, we have your resume, it'll help us get it.
Chuck Wilson, twenty one, pretty right away. Uh, I own a local property management company, so I'm a kind of a I'm a trade to get into buildings, I'm a licensed contractor, licensed realtor. I don't, I mean, I've never used the full permit, I don't actually listen to sound property, it's just I haven't used. I got the email, looking at all three years, I have two kids in the school system. My schedule's kind of busy, but you know, I can give back. If I can help, I'm willing.
We used to live down the street from him?
Yes.
Okay.
You were on the corner, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think three or four years ago, maybe five, ten five.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, great, yes, thank you for coming forward. Especially for the public building commission because it is very important for us. Uh, questions for Mr. Jack?
Yeah, so excited. This is this committee, I think participated all in or see. Yeah, so, you know, some years we've had some pretty active building projects and um having served on this committee in a late time position before, it's um it's interesting, it's somebody with your experience. Um, but it's really important to the eyes of your specific town, just like, I don't know, if you were here during the White House discussion.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's another, fun, exciting one, but, you know, um, your expertise is great, hey, well, that is needed, thank you. Crazy, and you say your time's limited, this group needs usually, if it's twice, if the rain is twice a month? Or?
Uh, it depends on what they have going on. Sometimes they don't meet for a couple of months.
Right, if there's a project.
I mean, when I say, I mean, I run my own business, so as long as I have a plan. You know, as long as I have a schedule or something like that, yeah.
You're done.
Two young kids and my own business is just.
Yeah, Steven, Steven shaves the chair, he does a great job.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, as the happily project moves along, that would be a project that you would probably have come.
Yeah.
Oh, does it?
School building committee, if it happens, school.
Well, I know they have, they have to look at it as well.
No.
Okay, sorry, this is important. Karen, any questions?
This can, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I actually, I can't tell. It looks like we're in the clear front of three members who are not elected or executed or generated. I I can't tell, I mean, there's only five members. Five large members. Um, they're currently two openly. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was my question. Yes. Um, and we have a connection that the public double commission will be looking at over the next year or so.
Actually, the water treatment plant?
I thought it was excluded.
Not good. Doesn't always go enough. I think school, other school, that's what I'm hoping to know. And maybe we would send it up.
Yeah, I was just gonna say it.
Quick transition.
Yeah. Not about the.
But that could be built up.
Not.
Okay. Okay.
But we want really. So do you have enough time to to vote to a committee? Do they need any way ever unless there's a project? Is it, all right.
Do they need?
They they do need, they have a vote to the prior, the prior. Oh, all right, so so there are, there is work still to be done? All right, you seem very qualified, so, but I wasn't clear myself on exactly the scope of what's around us.
I'll go with a question about. So thank you for stepping forward. Usually vote at the end of the night. You've been here for since the beginning, so don't feel that it upstays. I know, and we appreciate you coming forward, your experience.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too.
Okay. Next time, is just Paul in here? No. Is he baking here?
Yeah.
Hi, me.
Good evening, everybody.
You're here and interested in the zoning board appeals, thank you. This is a moment, though, it's very important. You can, what, tell us a little bit about yourself and why?
Yes, so my name is Steve Polly. I live at the twenty seven Lawson Room. Um, my wife Emily, four kids, I was the parent, and she's six and she's four. So um well, eight years I've worked as um worked with the panel, we can give off certain nutrition plans. Uh, that's the state's public finance and uh budgeting unit uh for the last three years. And I'm Assistant Secretary for federal funds, so there's all the uh federal funds that accompany the panel to respond to the uh public health emergency caused by COVID nineteen. Um, so I've done that for the last eight years. Uh, and then uh a week ago, um I moved from uh A and F to the Executive Office of Economic Development. And so I'm Assistant Secretary there. And so um you know, we've lived in town for eight years. Um, and so between family and, you know, pretty convenient job at A and F, I didn't have a lot of free time, uh taking a new job, uh I really wanted to make time to uh become more involved in the community. And so when the email uh came out, it was sort of fortuitously nine and so you know, thought I would uh would try it out.
I appreciate that, very experienced. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, why the zoning board appeals?
Uh, it's interesting, uh, you know, I don't have a policy bracket early, like use management, but uh so I am easily used to management interacts uh with the world by a lot. And so, um, you know, it's not sort of a sort of a one for one transfer skills, we use a lot of opportunities for the analytical work that I do in my professional life to to translate into uh into that. And even if not, uh, you know, so fresh set of eyes. People want to vote to get a call, be be helpful.
That's great. I'm gonna let Susan ask the first question because she's 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 probably why there's no thing. She was probably a boy, so. Yes, I think I know why there is one thing I was on CBA for three years. Have you gone to any of the meetings?
I have, no.
Okay. Um, I, yeah, I do. I think your background is great for the CBA and they definitely need support. They do meet monthly. Uh, and there's homework. Um, so I just wanna be clear about all boards and committees that homework. Uh, there is decisions, right? So each meeting has like eight, eight to ten hearings, public hearings, and then uh the committee members are responsible for drafting the decisions. Uh, and plus, one of the attorneys offers to do it, which is, some of them, every once in a while they do, but uh there is a bit of work to do, so I just wanna make sure you're.
I've turned not an attorney, but I do quite a bit of fake lawyering at that work. And so uh uh, I'm pretty, like, I'm pretty good at fake lawyer, so.
Yeah, no, I, you know, you definitely don't have to be an attorney. Uh, I'm not an attorney, people lose it about on attorney, but um I am not. But, um, yeah, so so it sounds like, I mean, your background's great, um, and yeah, definitely, it's a lot to learn. I mean, it is very thick, very thick rules, uh, look important. Karen, what's your questions? Do you take the train?
Sometimes.
There's a lot of train work.
Yeah, right, yeah, sometimes, uh, postponed, I've taken the ferry, you know, that's the train, but so.
Yeah, because it is detailed, that definitely is a lot of reading and a lot of. So the next shot of the day, yeah. Let's see where you're at.
And I have another question, and it just fell out of my head, we'll come back to you. Karen West, I'm sure. No, you know what? I I Susan, Miss Harrison has laid out a a skill set that this is required and how we'll see your backgrounds really for this stage of work. And it's one of the few boards and committees that, you know, it's, all of our working committees are in some form advisory to us as a board. This one in particular has to just comply with the rules and laws and we make stuff out of that. You have to just uh do your homework, as it said. So your background's fabulous for this and uh hey, you know, but if you find it interesting, it is, it is a difficult position, probably, because it does require a lot of such other skills, so thank you very much for raising your hand.
So is this an alternate member?
It would be the second alternate.
Okay, all right.
Position. But alternates have to attend to meetings, right?
Yeah.
Because in the event someone isn't there to vote, you're on.
It's actually great for learning.
Great for learning.
That's what I was thinking.
Although I think I was on an employee. But there was a string of resignations that I don't often acknowledge. But um, yeah, we have, there were two, currently two attorneys and um two builders on, you know, in construction.
Oh, right, right.
So two, two.
Oh, yes.
So it's great. It's also a good mess, right? Because if you don't want, you don't want all attorneys, you don't want all attorneys, you never get a lot of attorneys, you don't want them all. Do you have any questions for us? Oh, well, we thank you, thank you for, like, you heard, oh, my colleague said, great experience and that's a really important board to all of us for us to appoint people. So we will vote at the end of the evening. So feel free to stay and listen to everything else, or we can tune in and Lorraine will let you go.
Very good.
Okay?
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, everything. All right, is Ian Spooner present?
Yes.
Hi, Ian.
Good evening, Harry West.
I'm looking, great. I have a question before we go through this. Are we, are are we continuing the little swap committee? Yeah, we are, okay. So I saw someone in the day, they mentioned that they were gonna vote to.
Yeah, so, we are, okay, so I, I saw someone in the day, they mentioned that they were going to vote to stay. So, can they decide? That's why, yeah. And they're voting, only one they can notice, and, I know, I know, but I, anyway, okay, so Ian.
Yes.
Introduce yourself, uh, your madness, a little bit about yourself, and it was one committee to bring in here.
Uh, I live at one forty-six Stackback Groupon Drive, uh, I did there thirteen months ago, uh, with my wife and one-year-old son. Uh, thank you, uh, my wife's actually from here, uh, so, for earth, uh, I'm originally from Western Massachusetts, uh, so, actually, this would be the coast and the ocean, which I love, uh, but also, huge golf fan, flair, uh, so, that's kind of why I raised my hand for this, uh, skill set, what have you, uh, I've worked in product management, finance, uh, better part of ten, fifteen years, uh, and skills that are a match for the system.
Awesome. This is a, a great committee, it was formed, uh, primarily to start the love house, and put together that whole proposal, so that's why I think they think that they can disband, um, but, at any rate, there's more work there to be done, and more things to help, uh, Ian, the forest manager, that's his name, as well. So, you've got great experience, um, any questions? I'd love that you get your handicap on your ass.
Awesome question.
Um, it's not a perfect system. Now, the, 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 I mean, I didn't have any, Karen?
Uh, yeah, just once in the, right now.
Oh, yeah, uh, the work that he's done in the last, uh, one year and a half, or something, he's been on board, the numbers are great, and I think this committee is excited to take it to the next level, now that we've been coming to tournaments, things like that, so, just definitely working at world, and, because then, you, yeah, and your experience would be great. Thank you for, uh, being new to town and helping out.
Sure.
We'll talk about Sherwin's.
Yeah, absolutely, take time.
I'd rather not. Well, off Sherwin, right, this is, no, not that. No, good. Susan?
I'm good.
Thank you, we will vote at the end, thank you for stepping up, and, uh, sense for your committee, and just want to work together, we'll be working together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for having me in. Uh, is Nancy Werner present?
Please.
Wow, hi Nancy. You started, so you started.
Thank you.
Let's thank you by now. That's what I'm trying to.
Nancy actually proposed that we create a bicycle committee, uh, to research different, uh, bicycle paths and switching around and all such shit. So, thank you for bringing the name to be on the committee, so that's great. Um, I want to, just briefly, just so folks know, your background, sure.
Yes, I'm a, this is thirty-five years in front of the, I retired about three years ago. Actually, my career was in property insurance, so I'm legal, and I'm a lot of, I'm diversity, research, legal, and beyond people. Managing, so, thank you, I know about collaborating with each other.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Nancy? No, the only thing is, this is unique because it's a brand new committee, uh, so the beginning will be some organizational stuff, a lot of, you know, you've got your charge, they will help you with that, but, uh, you know, figuring out your leadership, and your cap board, um, so, your experience can, or your helpful map, transitions, since it's probably brand new, it's, right? I mean, it's, I'm just. Karen?
No, I don't, Susan?
No, I don't have any. But I noticed there's other, this committee, we're not interviewing everybody tonight, right? Some are on the next, right, okay. So, so we, too many applicants, right? Yeah, it may not look too nice, lots of them, okay. All right, I, you know, say it, probably better, so, and, for your initiative, so, we won't let you know, you don't vote until all the applicants that's confirmed, uh, you know, we can help. Okay, okay, thanks Nancy. Is, uh, Michael Bowler present? Hi, Michael.
Good evening.
What's your name, address, and what you hope to contribute to the, the bicycle committee?
Yeah, Michael, I'm eighteen, Sullivan Road, constituent, I live with my wife and my daughter Jane, who's going to the first grade at Jenkins next year. Very exciting, happy, and, and I just want to say, I'm thrilled to see five men on this trip tonight, it sounds like there's even more candidates for this, excitement for this meeting, and, uh, and that's a great thing, I think, if we stick with that sort of, actually, be a biking town that, um, people are attracted to, and can get around, and want that kind of network, and that, uh, accessibility.
Are you an avid cyclist?
I am, I travel thousands of miles around, especially with me, yeah, especially since we can't, most of those miles, I'm with my daughter on the back of the bike, you know, we just, you know, it's really just fun.
Great. I'd love to, I should, I'll, I'll just know folks, so, if you could, if you could take, it's a big town, you have a lot of, uh, country roads where, I, I know for sure, life is difficult.
Yeah.
But, um, what would you suggest that we do, almost to be able to improve? At least connectivity perhaps, or, I don't know if that's the word for it, but, um.
I think you have it, have it right, um, and I did actually, you know, I did submit a department service there, but, I kind of put some thoughts down on paper of what a face approach might be, what, what can the town accomplish? Really short term, medium term, long term.
Right.
Um, and thinking about what types of funding you look like required, and things like that, so I think that, in a really short term, but like I said, some road margins, some signage, waypoints, to get around the town. Um, and be thoughtful about how we're gonna connect the different pieces of our amount, obviously, the train stations, the schools, the beaches, the downtown areas, try to get that linked up, so that it's a useful network for our visitors, our residents, and everyone else.
Great, that's exactly what we believe at this point.
I thi- I think so, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions, Susan? I love that you did online. Have your thoughts. Karen, any, I guess. No, they, you, you, they, have you read the chart, because you just.
Yeah, I totally agree with everyone, yeah.
Well, we thank you for coming forward, and after we interview everybody, we'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Is Darcy Fady present? Hi, Darcy. It's a competition, everybody's here. Just ask a little bit about why you wanted to join the bike committee, there are some that said you're, you are an avid biker. Done, you're the second Ironman, congratulations.
I will compete in two weeks.
Oh, good luck, where?
Montreuil.
Where?
Montreuil, in Montreal.
Nice. Absolutely.
I'll challenge him on the number of miles.
Very exciting. So, you could be competitive committee, yes, hopefully they all have the same, same religion, which is the direction of the. Uh, so why don't we get to, like, what is your vision for this?
Well, I'll just start by saying, I'm Darcy Fady, I live at three eighty Sullivan Road, so, upper end of the. I, I have, uh, married, um, two children, loving chickens, I work full-time, I'm on the, uh, Coast Guard Auxiliary, um, I'm on the board of my triathlon team. So I sometimes get a little bored and think, oh, what, what else can I do, so this is something that sparked my interest, but, I am an avid cyclist, um, I'm more interested actually in bike safety, investment safety, so I wanted to see if that could be something that we added to this committee. You know, there's a lot of new laws that have been passed, uh, four feet law, the rear, rear taillight, um, you know, the front blinker on front of the bikes. It's not just about, um, you know, safety from, uh, vehicles to cyclists, or cyclists, or any type of pedestrian, it's vice versa, you have to be just as cognizant of traffic. And sensitive to traffic versus, you know, everybody has to share the road. So, I, you know, signage obviously for, um, you know, different route, but also signage for, you know, there is a four-foot law, you know, there is, you know, we are a town, we want to attract people to exercise and get out, and pay attention to each other and laws, and abide by those people are staying, and that's my main focus, because I know a lot of people that have been hit, and, uh, it's not fun. What's the four-foot law? So it means that if you're cycling along the road, a motorist has to give you four feet, or they can be pulled over, like, if, I mean, when I'm riding, I can count the number of times I can feel it, you know, uh, somebody going right by, and they just, they zoom past, you don't want to do any clearance, but, you know, I have to be careful that I'm not riding in the middle of the road either, so it's just, it's the give and take, but, the four-foot law was just the Massachusetts, actually, the last thing that actually just passed that law, but, there are asking cyclists to put, like, I have a rear taillight that actually, um, you know, blinks in the back, it notifies me on my watch that a car is, car is coming behind me, and there's some that actually have cameras, so that you can, if somebody actually were to hit you, you would have some sort of, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's very interesting, but, it's something that I'm very passionate about, so, I just thought, I know that there's a lot of competition to, uh.
Yeah, but it sounds like fashion would fit well.
It's different, it's different viewpoint, you know, I, I read the, the mission of it, and it's very interesting to me, I'm obviously, you know, I ride all around here, I'm familiar with everywhere, um, and that's just important, but safety is, so, appreciate that.
Susan, any questions? No, I don't, thank you. Karen? Well, I think it's part, you know, it's a part of the charge of the educational aspect of this. So, some of the, because he has to. Thank you. Karen, no questions, thank you for, uh, for raising your hand, I'm glad this has sparked an interest to me, in the, but, uh, opportunity for us to grapple these issues. Thank you, Darcy, okay, we'll be in touch on the interview, everybody, all right, okay, thanks for coming in. Is Tom Rose here? Hey, Tom?
Hey, I do.
Good, name and address, and you hope to add to the committee?
Sure. Uh, my name's Tom Rose, I live at seventy-seven Barker Road, I've been there since nineteen ninety-four, um, professionally, it's by a resume, but I, I work for Citic Plus, which is a municipal company. Uh, I work as a team leading the design services of their component, of their product, which is basically implementation of websites. Uh, certain, most of the, ten K, people of property. Prior to that, I actually own a business, I think, actually, work, did a lot of work on websites, on town, down. But anyway, uh, I guess with the bicycle, you know, I've been looking for a way to get involved in town government, and so, that description seemed to keep my interest. Uh, I've ridden my bike in town since I lived here in ninety-four, um, I know the roads really well, um, I guess, uh, my main focus would be on committing with the, probably outreach and safety. Um, there, there are a lot of new laws, there are things like that that go on, but I do think there is a way to, um, I guess, promote cycling in a way that's positive and all that, just make people that are driving on the road be aware of cyclists, and cyclists to be aware of what they're supposed to be doing as well. Um, I've seen some cyclists do some pretty crazy things, um, and, uh, I guess with, uh, after the pandemic, uh, there's a lot more kids that are, are riding their bikes, um, which is great. It reminds me, when I was a kid, and you could still out there and see fifty fishing poles, and riding their bikes, and going around, and, uh, I, I do think that there's an opportunity there, teach kids about being safe and all that, for their own wellbeing, um, but also, uh, you know, promote this fitness aspect of, and all those kinds of things. Um, one of the other things that's kind of stood out to me in the, um, in, in the, you know, above committee, and the charges, there does seem to be sort of a, I guess, kind of a a PR type of co-advancement, uh, with my experience with sort of developing like, what, you know, all aspects of mapping, uh, a bunch of other things, I feel that I could contribute really in that, so, it's really the first committee I've seen that I felt that I could really get involved with, that I had really, um, an interest in, not to, but.
Questions? Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, we should, I think that it'd be great to put together, that maybe actually in our reach, and obviously all the others. Um, I don't have any questions, you know, me and George, a lot of our projects, so, thank you, um, that's good. Yeah. Great, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And then, Moratay, you're right, I'm a mom. Like, like, like. Name and address, and what you hope to contribute to the.
Uh, my name is Moratay, I live on Utilly Road, since nineteen ninety-one, um, I can't register to it, I've been here, and I bought my first bike about twenty years ago, and I have to fully say that disclosure, I'm one of Nancy's good friends, and I made her buy a bike, and she started riding with me, and we started discussing this, and I helped to write up the charter, so.
Um, and my interest is, I'm in public education, and I'm a school administrator and teacher, and I've got some public schools, and I do a lot of biking, a lot of different towns
in a lot of areas, um, on beaches, Jowlet, the Cape, Salem, where my daughter lives, Boston, and I can see a culture shift happening. And I think it, I think of it as a culture shift, and I think you can't create that culture shift without inviting people, and making it something that they're gaining, not losing, and I feel like this, there's always been tension and situation with me and bikes and can, drivers, and I feel like that's not the way to focus on this, I think we want to focus on inviting people to learn how to enjoy our city on wheels. Like, we're thinking about t-shirts, we're thinking about, like, being present at events, like, Heritage Days, you know, maybe getting bike rental companies to come for special weekends, because I think it, it's all about kind of changing the culture, and I think, when it happens really well in other towns, it takes a long time, and it takes a lot of thought about how you want to break people in, not how you want to, you know, mandate what has to happen, so that's where I'm coming from, I love to do it, and I feel like it would be a great, I mean, I, kids riding to school, kids riding downtown to the carnival, you know, uh, people going to Heritage Days on bikes, and big parking racks everywhere, because I think eventually we could get there, and it's great for the environment, it's, we really need to stop the oil cars and the whole part. You know, so there's a lot of advantages to it, health and ecological, so that's where I'm from.
Susan, anything? Yeah. Actually, I, I'm interested in, do you think there's any chance that peace could be made between bicyclists and volunteers?
Yeah, I do, because there's a lot of tension.
There's a lot, there is a lot of tension, because cars are driving, and there, I was, the other day somewhere, sitting with there are three bicycle guys, one, two, three, and they get to the path of roads. Yeah. And I had to go around them carefully, so. Well, I think, yeah, you don't know on some of these roads, someone coming around the corner, I mean, it's, so, I, I think it's, it's as much of a.
That's why I think it has to be baby steps, it has to be positive, and I think it's education, like, sort of, you had, people said, there's a lot of, um, bicyclists that don't adhere to the rules, and there's a lot of drivers that don't understand what to do when a bicyclist is in the road.
Well, I think ninety-nine percent of drivers don't want to hit bicyclists.
Of course not, but they also don't know who has the right ways, and what they should do, and they get nervous, and some of them speed around, and, you know, it just, it creates tension, so the, the goal, I think, the initial goal has to be to disseminate all that. Get rid of the tension and start to educate and invite them, that's my thought.
Right. Couldn't, well, I'd love to see, you know, safest routes in town, because there certainly are some routes, that you just can't do, that are really tough.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
Narrow, windy, so.
Can't put bicycles everywhere.
Right, exactly.
But it would be nice to have, I would think, from the train stations to the beaches, or to the downtown, you know, like, the Driftway is a great place to just really start and have that, and, you know, a lot of other towns have those simple bike paths and five different places, and it creates a culture of biking, it's like, oh, we bike there, and, and the kids can go, and, and so I think that's minimally, you know, get from the train to the beaches, or get from downtown to Minnetonka, and vice versa, I think it'd be great. And t-shirts, it's a, it's a bike situation, there you go.
Karen? Uh, the only thing we really haven't talked about with the, the applicants is, first off, once again, we put out the, the call, and all these amazing people show up, so thank you. Um, one of the things that we talked about in the development of this charge and this committee, uh, we talked with our recreation department, this should go in, this will have to coordinate with other committees, so, I just, whoever is on this committee, just will be mindful that you know, the beach commission's been working on, I've got, Rex working on the race, and.
And a great shout out to some of those people already.
And a great shout out to some of those people already and just sort of touched and said, hey.
Right.
That's happening.
Nothing worse than having, uh, we've got all these people rolling, usually the same hub. So it's great.
Or a ski rush.
At least it was. No, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thanks for coming in. Breaking this, love when we, uh.
And look at our, our chair. Got a spray gun. Has to get more.
I know, yeah, but not.
Impressive.
Uh, okay, so next, uh, we have the pickleball courts location of the old gate. Steve Oles, Steve, whatever that is, Steve Guard. Oh, there's Steve Guard. He's got a beard.
How are you? Caught me off. Didn't wear a tie tonight because I'm falling.
Alright, so who's going to lead this discussion?
I think I'm, I'm going to lead the discussion as I'm getting standing up here. Are you doing a little bit of body safety?
Uh, so while you're, um, setting up, while you, while you introduce yourselves, um, your, your name and address, something.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Guard, fifty-one Garry for the Pride. Welcome. Happy to be here.
Jay, eight, twenty-seven, we, the link. Thank you. Excited to be here.
Uh, Mike Connor, eleven, the Dallas, one of our commissioners.
Nick LaBarra, recognition director.
You know, the Mike Scott, birthday today is National Pickleball Day.
I know, I heard that this morning. I didn't expect to open with that. I did hear that.
You heard that it was Mike's dog's birthday today?
My dogs.
A dog? A dog.
Thanks, Mark.
So, um, I'm here tonight with, with two asks. Uh, the first ask that, that I have is I'm looking for the board support for the ball courts. And then the second ask, more specifically, is we're going to be asking for board support to do a feasibility study on locations, uh, feasibility of a, of a site, the estimated cost for courts in Situ. Um, I presented to the CPC numerous times, to give you some background. I presented to the rec board several, several times and believe I have the support of both committees. Also, just to give you a feel on some background, I spent numerous times talking to Boston Tennis, uh, Situ Racquet Club. We own there. It's built two tennis clubs. I talked to Cape Cod Tennis. I talked to the folks in Ducksbury, Hull, Constable, Kingham, probably their, their studies and what they're doing to try and make sure we have a good feel of what's working in these other towns, what are some challenges the other towns have. So I think we, the team that we put together has kind of done a lot of homework on, on this. It's, it's been about a one-year journey. So, um, the funding for this, we come from CPC and CPC suggested after getting sports in the rec, next step is to come and ask for, um, yeah, uh, I want you to start with just, just a little bit of background here. So just for folks who may not know this, uh, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the United States. There's thirty-six million people playing pickleball now. It's actually more people playing pickleball than play golf or tennis, apparently, on, so on golf, tennis, the, the pickleball players are actually people. Um, the growth on it has been crazy, a hundred and fifty-eight percent over the last three years. And yes, pickleball is for old people, I'm old, I play. Uh, but the largest age bracket for pickleball is actually eighteen to thirty-four, and the fastest growing segment for pickleball is actually folks under eighteen. So truly turning into a multi-generation sport. Um, just to give you a feel for what other towns are doing around here, um, you'll see that Ducksbury has nine courts. They actually built six a few years ago. They're so successful that they actually built an additional three courts in the, in the last year. Kingdom just approved the study for twelve courts. Hull built four courts last year and they've already, it's been so successful, they've been looking for additional locations to build more courts. So, um, all across the South Shore, we've seen tremendous success in the towns that have, have built pickleball courts and Marshall Light next door has actually ten, ten courts. Um, just to give you a feel of kind of what, what it looks like, but the scope of, of building pickleball courts. Typically, what you're looking at is four pickleball courts will fit on one tennis court. And what I'm proposing is we actually build six pickleball courts in Situ. So you're looking at space that's roughly one and a half size. The time, uh, the size of a pickleball court. Uh, the other thing that I'll mention as we, we look at locations, there's really two key criteria just from the talk with other towns that have seen what, what they've done. Number one is just right up front, the noise. Pickleball can be noisy, so you're really looking for a remote area. You certainly don't want to put it in the middle of the neighborhood. The other thing with pickleball is charging. It's critically important. And you talked to some of the other towns, some of the challenges they have. Ducksbury, they just don't have enough parking. If you, if you build six courts, typically that would be four players per court. We're talking about twenty-four cars. They have a few people waiting. They have thirty cars there. So. Where do these courts go? Parking, it, parking and noise are two things that you really want to take close attention to. Okay, getting to, you know, I, I came here tonight with two recommendations for, for courts. Um, the first one was North Situ. So town land, which is benefit, um, there's room for courts and parking, which is, which is nice. Centrally located, um, and largely out of the way for noise. So there's a couple houses there, but, you know, comparison to the middle of the neighborhood, it's relatively out of the way for noise. Um, it has come to my attention that with such redevelopment, this location would be a challenge, but this location is, is an option based on some of the key criteria. Uh, second location that I'll mention is right behind us here. Um, this was a location that was actually suggested to me by Andy Goodrich, uh, in addition to all the folks I've talked about, childcare numerous times, Andrew numerous times. He can drive me and run a pickleball court. Just to kind of give him a, give him a feel for this and get, get his support. So he had mentioned right behind the town hall here, there's adequate space, there's room for the courts, there's room for park, parking, already town land, relatively out of the way for, for, for noise. So this could be a, a really good location.
I ask, what location, when you're talking about this location, is, which one is it?
So, you know, I, I think, and actually I'll just go here and then I'll answer your questions. Actually, no, I'll go back just a. You know, I, I think what my ask is, is to do a feasibility study and when we do that, if, you know, they would ultimately outline what the dimensions would be, what the spatters would be, where it would be, what the estimated cost, et cetera. So I, I think you could, there's, there's multiple options there of, of how you could do that. I mean, you could, you could, I've actually been out there myself. I walked it off. I'm using Google Maps, doing measurements. You could put six courts on the right side there. You could put four courts and two on, two on the left. Uh, one of the things that I think that we probably want to be cognizant here of is I mentioned potential cons, potential costs to add to parking. Do we need, if you put that there, you know, would you need to maybe put courts on the right side? Is it limited to the left side for parking? But again, hopefully the feasibility study would help us determine that.
Anything else?
Tonight, tonight, just to your question, Susan, tonight's, we're here to ask for support for the CPC to end support, the feasibility study of, of the sites. I don't think it's fair to ask the select to commit to the site, site or commit.
Yeah, so I think we should have talked a little bit about that.
Yeah.
A lot of that. So, um, totally in favor with the pickleball court somewhere. Now, we've got a two million dollar tennis project, tennis court project going on behind us.
Right.
Where you're going to add an additional court, renovate what's there, build that five courts behind it, right?
Correct.
Why do we need ten tennis courts?
So the parking at the rec.
So just to be clear, five here, five over at the old gates.
Right. If we add essentially, what would it be, Jay? Uh, four or eight pickleball courts?
Six.
Six, okay. So we're adding six pickleball courts.
Yeah.
And we're probably looking at thirty to forty more parking spots. Parking over there in the springtime is already a nightmare. Between T-ball, ourselves, tennis, pickleball, soccer, all at once, there's cars all over this. So parking is a major issue.
So we have to look at parking.
Yes. Uh, but I mean, I feel like it would be a good spot. It does have to be vetted through some of the other groups as well, like the U Sire, who uses it annually. I mean, they have it booked all throughout the summer. Um, and I get it, they probably could move over to the high school. But I, I do think it would be a good idea just to vet it through all the groups, just to make sure that's not.
I mean, that's, that's sort of my first inclination is we need to use what we already have.
Right.
So I, I will tell you right now, for me, no vote behind town hall. With, with noisy, all the noise complaints, you know, that's not the right thing to do to our town employees. Is to have pickleball courts behind them all day long while they're trying to run the town. So that, and I'm speaking for myself. And everybody else will speak for themselves as well. We're very good at that. So to me, that, I wouldn't want to spend money on a feasibility study for right there behind town hall. Um, so.
Keep in mind too, if I could just say one more thing, we just resurfaced and repainted those past courts two years ago.
And the other thing for me is that this belongs with you and the recreation committee under the advice of this advocacy. Because this is overall town recreation, right? What we're adding to our inventory in the air. So that's the other issue I have with this is the way in which it's kind of meandered through the system. Is I really think that it belongs with you and recreation under their advisement because you're advocating that you want it, that it's a great sport. Um, but that's where it belongs. So that's.
We're all for supporting all the boards and.
Yeah.
Where it's going to be. So.
We're going to go to the boards first, yeah. Um, so that, that's where I sit right now. I want to see this happen, but I want to see it done, um, in a manner which we're utilizing the resources that we may already have and not disturbing other places that don't need to be disturbed.
And I know the rec commission is against the tennis court piece because again, it's that Robin Peter paid Paul piece, which, you know, in space, obviously it's limited in time, the other's issue. You know, but it's, it's similar to like the, the baseball field where, where the baseball field was lost in four or five years, we didn't have like one field and, you know, so that sort of, it affected them. And we know the sacrifices, sure, it's very refined sometimes, so somebody comes to play. But again, it's, the tennis people now are up in arms of that. So like Nick said, if that does happen, we're going to be putting a board in, losing tennis courts. But again, we know the space is an issue. So if, 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 in a perfect world, it'd be a fixed water, I'm sure there is. But, uh, I know the rec commission is against the tennis court here. What's wrong?
Fine, that's fine. Yeah. Um, I, I agree with Mora. This is a no-go. It's just not easy. North Situ, I think, has challenges, um, because we just don't know what's going to happen there and it is an economic area. So, you know, I would be never inclined to not do something to prevent the development that should happen there. And I would not want to spend money on pickleball courts there, only to find out that in, you know, five years' time, we're going to have to remove them. I personally believe that the pickleball courts belong behind the Old Gate School. I think we take two of the tennis courts, which will give you eight pickleball courts. We still, are there five tennis courts up there?
Yeah.
All right. So then you've got the three tennis courts, the five tennis courts here, and you've got a really good situation. And the fact is, is that we know in the spring, we know there's soccer, we know there's T-ball, we know that, we know, we know all of this. But to my way of thinking, and I would rather that we take two tennis courts that you could easily and much less expensively out of the convert into pickleball courts. And then should the best thing happen, we need to deal with the, you know, more pickleball courts. Um, I would rather have that as a problem. And as for baseball, we have to make some really tough decisions in this town.
Oh, no.
Just let me finish. When we wanted to get the complex out of the back and we knew that we couldn't afford to add more money to that project to get that extra ninety-foot baseball field, we knew there was an issue there, but there's only so much this town can digest. And we only have a certain amount of money. So I'm, I'm in favor of pickleball. I know it's very people-loving. But there is the noise issue. And I think at this point in time, you've got the, the big wing in the back that someday is going to come out, if not that big building. But you've got that gym. It's, it's a huge brick wall.
No, it's, it's, no, it's greater.
The neighbors are the cemetery. Um, you know, I know there are some neighbors that, you know, will hear something, but nothing like, if we put it back here, it would, it would be a disaster.
But so we were.
This court has had enough of having listed people about noise.
So we weren't.
I don't want to create yet another noise situation in this town. So I would be much more in favor of taking a look at, you know, if, if, I still think North Situ is not a good place for it, but.
Yeah, I, I agree with our situation stuff as well. I mean, we get. We have a lot of complaints down here.
People complain about the children playing and the.
Right.
Playing, right. I'm not, I'm not paying.
So, okay, ask for.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jay, you could just walk us through how you narrowed it down to these two sites because I know that you've been working on this for a very long time and there's a lot of thought behind it. So.
Sure. Which in fact, you know, I think it's really been a process of elimination with quite a few sites. Some of the sites, there just wasn't support. For example, the day, the second field, there on Driftway, there, there wasn't support for that for various reasons. Uh, we looked at Old Gates, we ran multiple issues. You said tennis was not supportive, a high school was not supportive because they thought about, like, JD tennis teams playing there. There was concern with parking. Um, let's see, what others, what other sites? We, I looked at the library. That is my personal favorite site. Uh, but there just really wasn't much support there. Something that happened to the senior center. I still think there's a lot of land back there when you look at Google Maps and you start talking about out of the way, there's potential there, funding room, parking, of course. But again, it just, this didn't really garner much, much use of it as a thing for my own. So I, I could, I could go on and on. And I still think there's a few other locations we could check out, um, along Driftway. I think, you know, Old Gates could work, but there's some issues there. Parking, and I think one of the things, if you did that, you would have to look and invest in the auto, we brought some additional park. Maybe you could do that. And I know that Red Schoolhouse, I, I'm not sure, but parking was, when it's local gates. That was probably the most of all the sites that got the most pushback. That was by far number one, just.
Which I find interesting because it's probably the, the quickest solution in the.
You know, I, I still agree with that. I, I, I think it's a great thing for the town, the towns who've done it, it's insanely great for, for these towns. So I, I, I'm not picking on the location. I just, you know, platform, but I totally get it. North Situ is a challenge. Back here, so you know, we could back to July court and try and, we can look at Old Gates. Those were the, those were the issues and that's how we settled on these. Those cities are probably the most popular. Uh, I probably spoke to at least a hundred people around town, like, where would you like to see courts? And people love the idea of North Situ, but, um, so obviously some lots of, yeah. What they're basically talking about was, geez, we'd rate the pickleball there and then go across, do you have some coffee, lunch? And they thought it's just a great location. So does that help with the question?
Yeah, I guess, I guess then I'll put Nick on the spot too. It's, you know, we, we did the whole athletic field study, looked at lots of locations for seniors and, we've looked around town for lots of uses.
Right.
Housing, all of that. So in, I know we're all on board that this is a great proposal. I just got a text from someone asking me to go play pickleball tomorrow. You know, it's, it's, it is really fun playing it. You, you were presented with some ideas. Have you given any thought to, if there is a system that might be worth looking at?
Any, any other.
Yeah.
Locations? To be honest, I thought it would be an idea to take, I wouldn't say take away, but maybe, yes, take away the, uh, outdoor court, basketball court over next to the, uh.
No.
To the red.
Gas.
No.
Yeah.
And one that was.
There's three of them back there. So let me explain.
And then, and then potentially put four where that basketball court is, that's outside of the, that's there. But I already talked to SBA, Situ Basketball Association, and they're completely against it. So, um, that's one of the ideas I had in my, well, we've not. Very well, so, um, I mean, we're, we're welcome to, to having that, but we are, just want to make sure that it's had a good part. So it definitely looks to go with that.
So I wouldn't, um, you're going to get pushed back from everybody.
Right.
Right? So let's just, let's just agree on that.
Yes.
Because everybody is very protective of their space.
Right.
So if, if we're going to look at repossessing any space, we need to take a look at actual usage of that space.
Right.
So, you know, do we really need to rebase what courts back there? I don't know. Answer that. I don't know if all three are used all the time. Or is it just the new ones that are under the lights that obviously it's named for somebody that don't want to touch that, right?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that one was under Alex Kislowski's name or not.
I don't think so. I think it's the newer, the newer one of the, and that's all, you know.
Right.
If it's a case that we can research. So just note that when we look at a, including a best solution, it often does entail not making everybody happy.
Exactly.
So that's just, keep that in mind as we go forward. Next, yeah, I think so. One thing in, in doing homework and trying to, you know, think about preparing for tonight's meeting based on their information. Um, I did receive information and somebody can probably confirm this, that in the school curriculum, not, um, uh, no, junior high and high school already has a pickleball component to it. So, which I didn't honestly know, so I don't give it to the school. Already has a pickleball component to it, so, which I didn't honestly know, so I don't give it to school anymore.
Done there for a while.
Yeah, it's been part of it, and they usually do it in quarters, so.
Yeah.
You know, that's the amount of benefit should something on this campus be considered, is that it's, you know, maybe that's what's shared to schools, but.
Yeah.
I didn't know that until. A little factoid.
Putting it up here though would also bring a lot of people here during the school day, so I'm not sure that would.
That's, that's not, that would.
Just an idea.
I get just a question, I don't know if it answers the seat, just is, and how is the parking there in school there?
Well, that's, they're, they're.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty bad, yeah. But I thought it would be perfect with the tennis courts and basketball courts and bringing the army there.
Any other sites that you?
That's all I've, that's all I'm.
This is what I said to Mr. Angel, is that that's the problem in this town, is we have varied key locations, even when it's just like footprint. Well, and maybe what has to happen is it's what a phased approach, because we do have other parcels in town that will be free in the next five or six years, right? So is it a water treatment plant location that's gonna come down, that's.
Well, one way.
Or push a school, if they decide to tear that down, that creates additional opportunities. And I know that's very, very far down the road, but maybe that's why we need to look at this, maybe as a. Multi-step process, that's different pieces of property to be come available.
But if gates, if gates was viable option, that could be a temporary option, because you just talked of resurfacing.
Exactly. Right.
Nets, and then five years from now, you can tear out a school, you're all, you're going to triple four courts, throw those back to the tennis courts, it's. You know, you see the demand, you, with the conflict of uses, and now that's, that's it. That's the easiest, fastest way for pickleballers to get instant gratification, cheapest, um, and it certainly can be tested. For for short one, the post building fallout, you know, area, serving the.
I would just throw up one suggestion, we look at Old Gates, that we also would build a park, and just, we're, we're, how could you, you know. I I bet you've done the cause for virtual office locations, including Old Gates, and with Old Gates, I put in, we need to somehow invest in parks, we might have a different name.
Well, we've talked about as a board, not looking at that street to improve traffic flow as well, so if that were potentially made a way. Or that potentially on one side half of the road, so that also is something that's been. Well, discussing art town there during all these T-ball things, the effects.
Yeah.
So they should be made a safer.
It's on the side of the building, it's on the side of the doors.
I wanna go Susan.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, back, I wanna take us back to the Old Gates discussion. Um, is there the data on utilization of those five courts?
Um. Yeah, I mean, we may have whatever we have in our software system, that's the permanent software that we use, but that's, that's real good.
Yeah, I I'm just curious that who's playing, I know a lot of people are playing pickleball, but a lot of the people I know are playing pickleball who's played tennis.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious if there's, I don't play pickleball, but I know a lot of people. Um, I I just wonder if there's, um, people that used to play, that so there's more space in the courts.
The courts are, all five courts are basically used all the road today, every day, the whole summer, whether it's pickleball, whether it's tennis, and it's all public use.
Oh, they're playing pickleball?
Oh, yeah, we have, they're lined.
Yeah.
So we just make it official.
So they're lined with pickleball lines, but the issue is the nets, the nets are not the same.
Yeah, the nets are lower, right.
And you can, you know, like for pickleball, but Monday through Friday, or the summer, you can't use them in the morning. And in the spring and fall, you can't use them in the afternoon, high school tennis, so it's really not a viable option. I bet you say you can't play Monday through Friday, in the summertime, in the morning, when most people play.
But is it viable option, like the tennis courts?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but if you get to dedicate it, if you took the two courts that are separate from the three courts, and dedicated those. Pickleball, we striped and then re-edited them, then, once the high school's finished, you'd have five courts there for high school matches, and then you'd have. Or six courts anyway, maybe even eight courts, you'd squeeze eight courts in, right?
Yeah.
And if you still have dedicated tennis courts for tennis players and the Rec Department to use, I assume for lessons and stuff like that. That I have a position, but it's not, it's there now, but it's not ideal, because when you, it's one pickleball court tainted on one tennis. So it's, you you basically lose that tennis court and pickleball in play, where you can take two tennis courts and get eighty football courts off. You can jam to it, you can do six of it, and you're not losing one for one.
So you're gonna increase the number of.
Say that again, the number of people using.
Yeah, you're gonna increase the number of people using the courts by just converting to.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But could we, would we be okay with the utilization of this for tennis, if we just reduce two courts for what, five years, or four years?
Well, what's the timing on the tennis project?
What's the timing project?
Dan, do you know?
Pardon me?
The timing on the tennis project.
Tennis project, um, well, first of all, it has to go to that meeting, uh, to get approved for the design, and they have to sign, it's probably a year out. Probably not less than two year.
I think design is up this fall top meeting, right?
Yes, yeah.
So if they hustle, there would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the money would be immediately available to start a project, um, but then they have to come back for the construction.
That'd be.
Would be.
It'd be in the spring.
Yeah.
Then, so you're building it. Looking at when can you build it, can you build it in the meantime, get it down, school start, where the school was in, you know, much of it. But you'd be looking, fastest you get in construction would be sometime like the spring.
Wonderful. Yeah, I just, uh, you you said earlier, like that your rec was out of.
Correct, I mean, because for, more correct, it's eighteen tennis courts, you know, I mean, people who play the videos all the time, so. It's very rare, you know, if, I mean, compromise is key, I mean, if there's a compromise there, and it's, obviously, we don't have to find a decision makers, we just recommend, obviously. But, um, you know, we hate losing more recreation, we'd love another option, if possible, if that's not possible, but obviously, the, you know, we we support. If that is the only option, we'd love to see another option, because eighteen, some recreational, which, you know, those tennis courts are packed, you know, that.
But, you know, we're, through the record, we're not, we're replacing it with another recreation. Because in high.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's, we're not just abandoning it for, you know, for a non-recreational activity, so it's just.
Well, Susan made a good point to, tennis players have, well, to.
Jay's one of them.
Right.
Thanks, Dan Harper, when you talk about taking a basketball, creating a versus a tennis.
So just to make it clear.
I mean, to be honest, I think those tennis courts, and I'm all for basketball, I mean, that basketball court there, that's a skateboard park right there, that's, that's what I use in basketball, so. I think those tennis courts are used more than that, than that basketball court there, dude, sorry, SBA.
So I, so so I would recommend this, um, I think you probably have to go back to the drawing board and and talk a little bit more about. Of options, right, um, so feasibility study. And are we gonna pay them to look all around town, or, you know, for me, a feasibility study has to be a little bit more targeted.
I agree, I agree, yeah, I think that's why.
I think what you're asking for is actual, what they were hoping is they had a site that they then met the site. Right. But we're not ready to do this.
We don't have a site yet.
Understood.
We don't have a gate, so we'll get it and ask them, and that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, we, before about three o'clock today, we were pretty excited about North Citywood, and we 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 get concerns, but, you know, the, I heard those, real big concerns in North Citywood for the first time today about three o'clock, so.
Yeah.
Um, so we go to, and see.
And there's no property across the street that we, uh, in North Citywood?
Little citywood? Nothing, you're building.
That was a built one.
What is, what's that?
They're there probably.
But we, I did a, I spent two years, spent five probably, a swap for the Ellis State, spent like seven dry acres, uh, in town. We don't all want that's not built in decent.
And not conservation.
And not conservation, I want, yeah.
We did look at this, this, the field study, to try and like every location here, with that work across, particularly with one of the West End, but that's in the head, that's not, that work must be long, so. We have looked at.
That that's rather had real expensive stuff.
Yeah. Most expensive option is start from scratch, obviously, it's more, or more efficient to convert something here or that. And in in in, watch the demand, see what's there, and then if it can be thrown into a renovation project that's in five years, great. Then we can move them out of, you know, that that I think is the way to responsibly introduce pickleball.
And that's what I like, and I, I, I feel that you probably need to revisit that with some good data, you know, understand that you sit a gym. Parking, right, and come up with technical with parking there. Although. I mean, we're here, you know, your ask is for us to support feasibility study, but we don't have a site, we're not there.
I mean, you know, I think once that, that's, once that is done, the compromise of of gates probably could come into play, but, you know, that has to be done first, basically. Once, once the tennis courts there are done, but I think then you can start talking about this here until that's, you know, until that's done, you really can't talk about the gates, everything.
Well, you can talk about it.
Talk about it, but.
Concurrently.
Yeah.
You know, but it might not, that is really.
To each his, to do it, you know.
I'll add too, that once you take away, I think, once you take away the five courts and turn it into three, you can't have a high school match there.
Right, but you'll have that.
Right, no, so I'm just, I'm, I'm just throwing up, throwing that out there, because then they couldn't have, you know, girls and boys or JV play at the same time, if they ever wanted. They can't. Right, but if they ever wanted to.
If if we had all the money in the world, and all the space in the world, no problem. I have all the points on it, we, at least three of us on this board, have been through the exercise, looking, the girls going out and they walk. And wherever you look, there are issues, and some of them are more technical than others, and as much as you think behind the libraries place. It turns out the senior center is gonna go there at one point, but all the site work to get in there was cost prohibitive. Or at the senior center, we're talking about the senior center, we're talking about courts here. So, you know, and I I totally understand, if you're, if you're a tennis player, you don't wanna give up one inch of space. We understood this, the baseball people, we had to give up, so we could get this big complex, and we had to make some sacrifices, because we knew. We couldn't get an additional three million dollars to be able to immediately replace the the, uh, baseball. So, but everyone lives, don't they, I mean, you get over it, so I'm. I I can't believe you're gonna feel like coming up with, you know, something that satisfy me, that it isn't the most cost-efficient, quick. Solution to a problem, and that, you know, and if our problem becomes, we have too many pickleball players, maybe we don't have enough tennis players anymore. So, and if the tennis courts are not used during the summers by the tennis team, it's a, it's a spring sport, so most of the time. I mean, we see a lot of empty recreational facilities around here, um, and I know it's because of the nature of the, the seasons with sports and the the kids, and when they play it, but. I think there's a simple solution to this that could be done, and, um, I'd rather we went the simple route than. So why don't we do this, it does, well, if I can summarize, you know, rec, it sounds like, oh, second, I'll excuse you, um, it sounds like. Want them to kind of go back, re-communicate, take a look, with, at, with, combined, so S, I can read. Uh, with the Recreation Commission, and with, with, these are starts with recreation in town, um, and combat with. Digital, another solution. Um, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah.
Is that a fair assessment, so the board does not support where you are, which is currently presented? Um, yeah, that is.
And we came back from the gates as the, I'm just asking a poll question, taking a straw poll, we came back with that as viable option for us, us, the Recreation Department, pickleball courts. Would that be something that would support for feasibility study, that case?
Potentially, the homework is in here, and I can't speak to how everybody would vote, but I think we would have to care about the proposal, this with the timing, and also, I think, take into consideration. Getting some confirmation on where we are with that too.
Yeah, well, obviously.
Meaning the tennis courts.
Yeah, the tennis courts would be, that would have to be considered upon our success, right, I mean, that has to happen, so we go forth, we don't, we don't need to take away. Tennis teams' ability to produce batches here, and since that's not our intent at all, right, so don't deal with that, we could move ahead and do it in parallel past, so that we can all arrive at the same destination. Somewhere around the same time.
Yes, uh, first one, as the Chair of CPC, I'd like to correct what I thought I heard earlier, um, that CPC supports this project. Um, we have not voted on the project, uh, so that's not really true. Um, we have supported the application for the project, and we were probably, uh, the reason why they're in front of you today, because we asked them. For the feasibility study, to de- define a location that they wanted to do feasibility study on. So, um, as a private citizen, and, um, thinking about the cost of either a- any kind of solution for this. An existing facility will be significantly cheaper than a new facility, I mean, I'm thinking. Million and a half to two million to add one tennis court on an already existing location that has parking, that has fencing. If you're talking about buying up, building courts in a new location, where you have to build in cost of parking, fencing, et cetera. It's gonna be quite expensive, it's not gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be a couple of million dollars to do that. It, just the way things are costing. So I think we, uh, in my opinion, I think it would be the best solution to use an existing facility. To be able to build a, uh, pickleball courts where there are already parking, fencing, and a court, I think.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to? I like the CPC, Dan, and of course Jay, and my brother, and I'm a pickleball player, Russell Test, but, um. Isn't that, we're asking for a feasibility study, so wouldn't it be good if we have a feasibility study? Study gates and the parking and then all that, and then, and then it'd be, so, I think, we did have to wait a while for the tennis people. Jay, if I can, to answer that, what I think we wanted to know first is where, you know, where the tennis people were with getting their, these, you know, the courts here fixed for the high school players. So, I think you just have one more step, which is to get the Recreation Commission and Nick on board with that, so I think you've gotta go back and meet. And then talk about it, and let them talk about, about their stakeholders, and you have to agree on where that, that, that. And, you know, it's gonna have to double check the gym and town hall to make sure, if there's another site out there, that some, something comes up, and what, what's that look like? That would be my recommendations for you guys, just to to meet again, kind of hearing where, where, what you're hearing up here. I think it would, we are inclined to support, but I would wanna make sure that you're all. Anybody have anything else? Well, can I say, I don't wanna spend money on a consultant to tell us there's not enough parking of the gate school. Because I don't want it to turn into yet another, we need more parking situation, and parking lots, as Dan knows. Parking lots are very tricky things to build, and they're not as cheap as you think, no matter what. Penny Scott, Alex, Concon, also knows the same thing, uh, parking, so I don't, I don't think that I want the quote-unquote parking issue. To even be a discussion point up at Gate School, because I think we've managed as a town, have a lot of stuff going on up there. Without the whole issue of, well, now we have to have a regulation parking lot, and there's more parking up there now than you think anyway, because the senior center is up there. Uh, there's a parking behind, or at the front of the Rec Department, there's parking down the road, and Morris Frank, you're talking about, you know, what if anything. Do with the parking, the road configurations over there, because of that intersection. So I thi- I personally think, if you guys wanna get out of the running, that the Gate School is your best alternative, and the most economical, and we can certainly do. Get the money at town meeting in the spring for construction, if we do it in a special town meeting. Because we can have access to that money before Ju- before July one, if, so you could be doing. Building the tennis courts up here during the summer, and you could be converting two of those ten- those tennis courts at pickleball courts at the same time. That's just awareness.
Like we're planning.
Alright, so we'll look to you guys to, to be.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We're all in support of the laws, I think we are, but we just wanna make sure that we're utilizing the justice appropriately.
Thank you very much, I had two goals, one was games, four, the other is speed, we got to achieve one goal, so, thank you.
You'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
To everybody. Thank you.
Hi, this is Nancy. I don't know if my order of, I think, mark face, I can't. And we'll, I, I don't know if you wanna table the revolving for discussions, this is Dan here, who was, I was wanting to talk about it.
No, uh, we don't have to table it, but I do have a question for you. I don't even know, know that we need to rewrite it, because I read, um, the language that you devised. So we read in the language, um, under the solar writing and the term fine, there, the last sentence needs the flexibility for the select board to choose alternate uses of that money. Yeah, so I don't even think we need to change it, that's my personal opinion.
And we don't need to change it, I just do not go to town meeting and have our, fire the government.
Right, but I also think we could be restricting future boards' desires.
Right.
How they are, we can, we can go to direct the use of those funds, as written now.
Right.
That was mine, did anybody else read that?
I kind of consented, right?
I agree.
I agree. The good news, you're catching up with your agenda. Show one of theirs.
All right, so, um, what did, Susan, do you have any questions?
I, uh, I, I agree with you.
Okay, so, um, we should be, good, Jen, you're good with that?
Sure.
Right, so we'll take that by law. And then off, we have a, we have a shorter special town meeting. Oh, that is?
Yes. We could knock an article out, but.
One officially says. You know what I'm saying? Open it. What's best, it was, I don't know, change that.
No, actually, yeah. No, actually, yes, sir. Okay, next is, uh, to talk about the articles to be included in the special town meeting. Orin, Scott, Chip, and Nancy. And that's Nancy. So, um, it says to, okay, guys, it says to, uh, you've got seventeen, so we're probably reduce it to sixty now, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, so anybody have any questions? We did list these last week, and it's like a couple of them come off. Is anybody got any questions regarding?
Yes. I, twenty-two, I have, or we voted for.
No, go ahead, so what's your question?
I thought that was a lot more money.
Which the project estimate right now is twenty-five to thirty million.
Right, so what's that amount of?
I don't know, generally, there's a rule of thumb, and Nancy would know better than I do on an Army Corps project, just value is about twenty-five percent.
Thirty-five on Army Corps.
So, I don't know, that's where they got it from? The Army Corps, all those in our last call, the most we would get from the Army Corps is ten million dollars. No matter what else we did, what other changes we made, we get ten.
Two good petitioners on this, I'm not asked.
If you don't know, they they had a lot of conversations with, with me about this article, where they got enough of, why they were filing it. They get a message from the side of the lockers office, they were gonna try to put some money in the appropriation bill, but it won't be anywhere near twenty million dollars, which was basically what we made out of this.
Does Seawall fund? No, because it's market.
So you just give file appropriation. Katie has put us in for money for the, for, for appropriation.
How long do those types of things take?
Okay, probably a year or two.
Susan, any more? No.
So even, even with the ten, if you do the ten and the seven, we're still short on twenty.
We're way short.
Ten, thirteen. David Seawall, that's what he usually does around three. But I give you, this thing.
That's the max.
So we're still short ten.
Yeah. Permitting of it, we do it. Okay. Yeah, um, I seem to recall that they referred to an article in a prior town meeting that we decided to not do because we didn't, we still didn't have any information, the Army Corps.
There's two reasons, two, two capital budgets, no, I think I listed almost all the remaining large facility projects that we had.
Yeah.
And it was a number big enough to show almost.
Yes, it's huge, right.
That's why, totally, at times, we can't do these, that one was not next in line, it wasn't our next priority, so that one came off the list, after the Army Corps was still.
Picked that number out of somewhere in some, constantly.
The original, the original Army Corps estimate was around seventeen million.
Yeah.
Now it's almost done. So.
So that's what we're done with. Sorry, to have some other information that is not even, never even noticed.
It would have to be a borrowing, because obviously, we're not seventy million dollars cash, we could, so that would have to do with borrowing.
I thought a petition or couldn't compel the executive body how to find.
No, Tommy, you can vote that. You never have to issue a motion, never really.
It has to be, it has to be on the warrant, because it's a social petition, we should. We will hear their petition and vote as a board whether we support it or not. So the town meeting vote, if it, if it goes screw, we can, we can sue, not about that. Right?
As a passes, yeah, you don't have to have it due.
Right, right. If we don't support it, and we're successful, then we can fail some term. Uh, Karen, you have a question? They did. So we'll come back to you. Yeah, come back to me.
So just so you know, the two petitions have been invited to, not select for you, to present their articles to you.
And are we also gonna have for, um, for that meeting? I think we should have the animal control officer in as well, for enforcement of such a change in, on, on this. Well, I think when they presented. You what? No, I get a little controlled officer, we don't always want to convene the commission.
Yeah, uh, well, then we can have, uh, we'll look at by accident.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I guess he should be here, because just to talk about the enforcement of such a change. I remember. Okay, all right, so that's it, Karen, you have a question?
Yes, uh, no, I just, clarification on removing regional support of the brand, um, that line in number fifteen. What was the, what was the, that was to manage the Aqua?
We were gonna do, no, so we've gone back and forth like nine hundred times on what the design was, right?
Right, and then we had allocated.
Official meeting of the beach soul, where we were going to go back to that larger project.
Yeah.
We were gonna offer up additional money to move forward and design incrementally. I'm sorry.
Sorry, dollar part.
So, we put in for Aqua money, which I think we're gonna have for our question anyway, so we need that. And you've all read the comments coming out of the hassle. I don't think they're gonna put up a dime, uh, but I'm not sure this is going anywhere.
Yeah.
So.
Hold on for now.
Something happened, uh, being Nancy over there, to refund a hundred thousand dollars to get us to town meeting in the fall. I just don't expect anything to happen in the near term, but we're gonna need that money.
But I, I was looking at it, it could go either way, we could allocate it, didn't happen, whatever, but I think it sets up all sorts of implications.
If something happens, that all of a sudden, we need the money.
We'll figure it out.
Close budget, replacement.
Nancy will go to the.
Figure something out, you know, I'll have to do the cushion from the house or something, but I just don't see anything happening, then I'm gonna need that money between that and.
Oh, I understand, okay, okay, thank you. So, the other question, I said, no, I just wanna find that, I don't wanna read expectations, but on the town meeting, why you said it, and it's just I just thought, until we have some real sense, more than just, until we have a written agreement with them, I am glad, I don't need to allocate a dime.
And they, the sense that I've got from this board, go search it back on the capital plan for next year, and we start designing.
Yeah.
It's kind of simple, it's the plus, right, we're gonna tell them that, we're gonna tell them this one.
Right.
That's really the question. I think it's gonna be told in this one, and that's what Kevin will give you a number, that's what I'm hoping the I N I is gonna give us.
Well, that's why we asked them this, that's right.
So he said, I can put a hundred thousand gallons up there, it was a little short of what we need, but it's, it's close, we need about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for buildup of the, uh, full buildup, just for the business village area. Add buildup, not including whatever changes we might make for the M P T A, uh, but those, I hate to put my head in the news, but, but, but what I've looked at with planner, it's not like a hundred fifty additional units, we changed the zoning to, they comply, it's, it's not, oh my god, that is, we're gonna be able to bid it. So we'll, we'll be close, I think, but, you know, start with Kevin, have that back with a new number on the capital plan in the coming year, and then we just set, we don't do this one, we don't do that.
Okay, I'm retracting it. Um, any other questions on any of the other warrant articles? So, do we need to vote?
Just to vote, put the articles on the warrant, and then your recommendations would be able to be made.
Right.
But things will still change, but at least topical warrants go on, and this is good example of property.
So it's seventeen to seven, number?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh, we need a wire.
So we need a motion, yes, to.
Do you like the motion?
Yes, you probably want to say which one we're, we're moving. Uh, well, motions to, move through fifteen articles.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen?
Sixteen.
See, I'm not blooded, sixteen articles in October sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Special town meeting is provided, and the draft warrant was otherwise moved by the request from the property, and as presented, it's all articles except now removing, what number?
Number twenty.
Number twenty. Moved by Mrs. Canfield, second, and Mrs. Conley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that motion. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right. But then I got my question, please, that's later. All right, so we have some one-day wine and malt licenses. All right, even I still need some. Yes, I did. To move to, uh, through the one-day wine and malt license, especially under the privateance. Show a question.
I actually do have that question.
Sure, you can, go ahead, yeah.
Um, I do know that, um, Untold Brewing has done, uh, a number of events over the years, like the one they're proposing, this one is a fundraiser for Hope Castalucci. Um, they're asking us for twelve, twelve p.m. to seven p.m., which I think is fine hours, but the question has come up, a couple of people have asked me about, if they're having the event in the parking lot, where are the people attending the event supposed to park?
And park, they have E T S, yeah, they arrange for the bridge. Yeah, that's why I asked the question, as I think I know the answer, but, yes, thank you, so.
Yeah, I called Matt just to make sure, wow, he's here. And he hired police detail, he's, you know, he has parking attendants, that'll be a good, and he's having, he's has permission from the M B T A to park there, which is what he always does.
I was just gonna say, he has a history of doing this, of doing it well, but I did get a couple calls, people saw it on the agenda and say, where are they gonna park?
Sure.
Thank you for the interview.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, good question.
Yes. Um, move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to the ladies' fish market privateance at eight, um, this month, August tenth, nineteenth, and thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, from seven to eleven p.m. And move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Family Cross Brewery for privateance at City American Center of eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from four to eight p.m. And on August twentieth, from six to ten p.m. And move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Lush to the Gator for privateance at Lush to the Gator. And on August seventh, twenty twenty-three, from seven to ten p.m. And move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Mountmore Glory for privateance at parking lot of six of Old Country Way on August twentieth, twenty twenty-three, from twelve to seven p.m. And move to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Blackgate Root for privateance at the Root on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, from six to ten p.m.
Moved by Mrs. Canfield, second, second, I was conley, discussion.
Amy Revon, ten minutes ago. I understand that Untold Brewing is dealt with parking issues badly, and that's true. Root is brand new, where is their parking, do they give a detail, et cetera, et cetera.
What's brand new?
Root.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they are, it's their last one.
They are, they are, the last one.
That's just based on Country Way, right?
Right on Country Way.
And that's the new, the new, uh, parking center.
Right, that's what we should do. Also, too, and, you know, and I have brought up a ways fish market. What arrangements, I guess I'm asked, what arrangements are these people making of parking? That's, that's all they wanna know, what?
The ladies, the, the, the avenue parking called Parkway.
Yeah.
Yeah, he always does.
She brings up a good question about, did they, uh, do they create?
Created parking in the back, and she had, you know, kids parking the cars in the back. And she only has small events, she doesn't have huge events. She sent us a calendar of events, they're all agriculture related for her shop. I've had extensive conversations with all the, the business owners in the slide board office.
Just to ask them.
Yeah.
For property use, yeah, no, it's a good question.
Yes, they're good questions, like you said, it's new.
Yeah.
And they've been very, very cooperative and wanted to do things.
Okay. Any, uh, additional discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, you can vote some community appointments, I would imagine. Uh, what does that mean except for the? Is that like bicycle commission?
I didn't put the bicycle commission on the motions. Because I mean, I tend to.
Yeah, no, no, that's good. I agree. Diane?
Thank you very much.
Diane? All right, so do we have any, um, we'll just go down the list of the folks that came in this evening. Any concerns or concerns? Do you have any, like, a great addition to the P D C?
Oh my gosh.
Russ, Russ did not have been.
No.
So we'll hold off on that. He seemed like a great additions or zoning, any?
I agree.
Move back, we'll just sort of go about this. Uh, Ian, Widow's Walk?
Hundred percent.
Yeah. And then that's it. Now, did we interview all the beach commission?
Yes, there was one more person that was supposed to be interviewed tonight, but he withdrew his application.
Oh, he did?
Yes, so we have the four people that you've already interviewed.
Yeah, and how many spots we have?
Two.
Only two.
Um, pause all the chat.
Twenty-nine, is that forty-nine? All right, so let's do the top first, do you want to do the top first, you want?
Yeah, sure.
Will two-point Jeffrey Wilson to the public building commission for a term of three years in the parent's successor's name? Good one, yeah. So, page one twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, motion to appoint Russ Paul to the town, I mean, giving him the term.
He is not the one, I think he did.
Not the second, sorry, we'll just do the first one. Will two-point Jeffrey Wilson to the public building commission for a term of three years in the parent's successor's name?
Second.
Who is Conley, second, is Sarah Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move to appoint Pete Bailey to the zoning board of the fields as a second alternate for a term of three years in the parent's successor's name?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Conley, second, by Mrs. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to appoint Ian Spooner to the Widow's Walk committee for a term of three years.
Move to appoint Amy Spooner to the Widow's Walk Committee for a term of three years before Untold Successor is named. Moved by Mrs. Connelly. Second. Second by Mrs. Can, Mrs. Canfield, all favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, so there we are, uh. For the beach commission. Um, I think I, I don't think I skipped for all of the.
I, I just wanted to grab your attention to, um, Mr. Miller. Had applied to the E D C for his first. Choice, was not appointed to the E D C because there was. Too many candidates. And the beach commission was the second choice. And these were the dates that they came in. So.
I, I'd like to advocate for Mr. Mesa, I thought, um. I was impressed with his answers and with especially just that accessibility was priority.
Yeah. Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Look to appoint, um, Chris Mason. To the beach commission for a term of three years before Successor's name.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Canfield, second by Mrs. Connelly, all favor? Aye. Aye.
So.
They've always picked that. I know, well, you can write for you, but I'm going to try to keep my. Why not?
Why not?
Yes, the, like, that is probably in my notes, so.
Yeah.
So from on for twenty-nine. As Ron Miller is speaking. Well, I would make a recommendation for Ron Miller, since we put in for two different. Questions. You have notes on them? Um, just that his resume.
Oh, here, I found it. All right, so the. Uh, Morgan Stanley. Finance guy.
Finance guy, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I have a second that.
You made a motion for Ron Miller, second advice, Canfield. So when you have any further discussion or thoughts? I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. Yeah, we're adding our up with you. All right, we have others. So we have a motion and a second to be. But we only have two open, is that right?
Correct.
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 But I can also extend the offer to the other places where we do need people.
Yeah, that's a great, I made a pitch for you, the other night.
Yeah, good. Um, so I do have other committees who are going to need people. And happy, you know.
But I know that also we're telling me of great candidates, reasons that positions going to be doing.
Good.
Okay. Did. So there's a motion and a second? On Chris Mason. Ron, Ron, or? We already go to Chris Mason.
Okay, yeah. And he, Mr. Miller came into the E D C and he'll get it, so.
Correct.
I will, I will say. I'd like to give him a second choice.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, and yeah, thanks, Lorraine, for letting them know, um, right. What else is still available?
Sure.
Yeah, Mark was interested in cultural history.
Yeah.
That, again, we were, we, we had.
Yeah.
Bravo.
So I like to keep these notes in this book. All right, I prepared another, uh, with same appointments, would you like to push it for those?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, please. Um. Motion to appoint somebody, James Bedrow, administrator to the Massport Community Advisor Committee for a term of one year until Successor's name. And motion to reappoint man added public to the position of treasurer collector for a term of three years until Successor's name. Motion to reappoint Susan Gallo Gallagher to the City of Harbor Cultural District for a term of two years until Successor's name. Move to reappoint Rihanna Trupera to the Able Foundation Committee for a term of three years until Successor's name. Move to reappoint Carolyn Sullivan, Anthony, Swann Hunter, John Sullivan, all this, Dennis Moore, John Cannon, James Cannon, sorry, kids. Um, Vincent Cleveland Junior and Ray Gallagher to the Sister City Ireland Committee for a term of two years until Successor's name. And re, motion to reappoint Celia Redkisha, Elena Sika, Gulata, Tom Seacore, Pete Spoo, Angela Rivera Dre, Natasha Stewart, Elena. Um, Gulata, Robert Clark, Lieutenant Amanda O'Shea, and Mark Hearn, their term of two years until Successor's name to the, um, uh.
D E I.
The committee of the, yeah. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Canfield, by Mrs. Connelly, thank you for reading all the. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we are on to liaison reports. Does anybody have, anyone that would like to, uh?
I think step one, I, I could get to the use of the historical language and stuff, but I would love to report that, um. Board assigned one of the review of our policy book to me at our retreat. Um, and I met with Lorraine in Purple Green, Devon, today to put that, to, uh, to start that process. So we will be coming back to the board with, um, it'll probably be a two or three step, um, review process, but we'll be coming back to. The pretty short order with next steps.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Lorraine. Is that really up there? So that's it? I under it here.
Um, the whole Parkway Committee has sent up their R F E to, uh, engineering firms for, uh. To figure out what, what, if anything, we can do with whole Parkway, especially to reduce flooding. But obviously, it's a bigger, uh, bigger problem, so. And I did have a meeting today with the Pier Forty-four Committee. Uh, we're entering into phase three, and we will be reporting to this board, then I'd say, let's face it, as to next steps, what we're doing. Uh, what has to be done, and it looks so, we don't have to go through the chapter ninety-one A, terminate the process, which will add. I'm not sure how much money, but yeah, and because of bill. There's still one, and the building is an unauthorized building. So, yeah, so there are more problems, but it will be.
Unauthorized building?
The Pier Forty-four building is according to the state unauthorized.
Okay.
Uh, so, so we are triggering chapter ninety-one A. It will definitely, like, the, the process getting solved done, but I don't know how much more money it will cost, but it's just. We kind of expected it to have, we were hoping it would, but it was coming to. Okay, that's it. It's great.
So, um. So I have a couple on prom, so I can keep calling. That's, you were there with the doc discussion, um. Um, which, um, was closed that session, but then also the, um, there was another discussion after that, um, mine. The properties that have been destroyed by the, the fire. Um, and. That one was supposed to come to the next, continue to the next meeting, um, to look at the beach nourishment plan for North City Beach. Because there seem to be a potential conflict with their, their building, look from their house. Even on two properties, and there seem to be a conflict with beach nourishment. So they want to fly that, I, um. I'm following up on that as well. To actually get the beach nourishment plan, which was sent, which should have been sent by last of this meeting, so. We've got. Constant babies looking into that and, um. Yeah, so to be continued, but I would be wanting that because it will, it should be noticeably. Um, further out the building, right, and just the use of the beach will look different.
Hmm.
Once, one of the, one of the buildings, and then also with the nourishment thing as well. I, I possibly didn't slow the original plan, that's going that far. But yeah, I have to check, but it, the map does look like it goes that far up, and it does change the slope a little bit, so. Just. We're on. Mission, beach nourishment, I know they came in front of us.
I had the ground, I thought it was further down.
Yeah.
So.
Further.
And further away. I think the original, that, that was, I think that's probably, well, it's permanent for the whole beach. We're talking about not having resources to do the whole beach, but it will impact.
Oh, so that might be the issue, because it does go quite a bit.
Yeah. And so whether or not the actual owners when we're talking about, such as that now, it would have been better, correct?
Sounds like you.
But I don't think that they would be able to encroach on property they don't own, which wouldn't have been permanent, so, they'll sort of.
Right. Right. But it would be different for the use of the beach. Because I'm saying not all the way past babies cause what I, but look, it's still, it's, uh. Uh, okay, yeah, anyway, good times, um, and, um. Good news, baby oysters are out there. Oh, baby, the stars, oh, my stars, there.
Um, there's baby oysters.